Yeah.
Is it going?
No, not yet.
You're good.
Recording in progress.
Can you tell me when you're ready?
I'm writing.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, I'd like to call the Village of Cottage Grove Village Board of Trustees to order on Monday, May fifteenth at six thirty-one on my watch. We are holding this as a hybrid meeting, meaning that we are in the village hall as well as on Zoom. There is a Zoom link at the top of the agenda, as well as an audio call in number two. The agenda was properly posted and we have a quorum and we'll move right to the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Next then, we have public appearances. This is public's opportunity to speak. If you are from the public and wish to speak, we just ask that you share your name, your address, your municipality, and hold your comments to no more than three minutes in case we have a number of folks who would like to speak. So with that, I will pause and allow anybody in the room or on Zoom who wishes to speak to raise their hand. All right, we did have three folks who submitted wish to speak forms. They didn't actually wish to speak, but they did wish that their information was put into the public record. So that was Mike Park from eight oh three Lindsay Way. Mike referenced just his support for additional funding for the library program for the second half of 2023. Next then, we had Dawn Martinez and she's from eight twenty Damascus Trail. Dawn again was speaking behalf of the library funding and again extended through the end of the year support of that people's support. And then finally, Kristi Murphy from two four one six Red Arrow, excuse me, Red Ale Trail, actually in Pittsburgh. And Kristen said she's in support of the Library Board developing programming that draws all the way, them all the way from Pittsburgh. So that's good to see. So with that then, we'll move on to discuss and consider our regular board meeting minutes held from May first. Any questions, comments, or edits?
Make a motion if the minute is written.
All right, thank you, David. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Any further discussion? Having heard none, all those in favor then?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Anyone abstained? Motion carries. Next then, we have a presentation to the board. This is a presentation by Baker Tilly regarding the village's 2022 audited financial statements. Amanda. Yes, please. You can be, you can stand or either way, but we need you to have them, the mic up. And then just make sure that the mic, you pull the switch towards the top of the mic so that those then on Zoom can hear you.
All right. All right, thanks for having me tonight. I'm Amanda Blumberg with Baker Tilly. We conduct the villages audit and I'm here to present 2022 to you. You should have received some financial statement documents not too long ago. One is rather large and our goal here tonight is kind of to boil that down into a few benchmarking tidbits for you to take home with you and understand kind of how that is viewed as financial health of the village. So we'll go through some of those basics. You also received a related document and audit results document that talks about internal controls, upcoming, you know, reporting standards, and I'm happy to answer any questions as it relates to that either document. But I'm going to focus mostly on the financial information. We did issue an unmodified opinion on the financial statements, which were prepared in-house this year. So that is the highest level of assurance that we can give on sort of financial statements. So that is good. And then I'm just going to jump into some summarized financial information. I see it is up on the screen there. So if we jump into the first page here with the graphs, this is, what we're going to focus on here is the general fund. So this is the main operating fund of the village. This is where a lot of the tax roll goes. A lot of the general operating costs are recorded here. This gets a lot of focus from the outside world and gives you a level of, you know, just kind of a benchmarking level as far as like what the, the general health of the village is from a financial perspective. So the first thing we're going to talk about in the general fund is the fund balance. That is essentially the equity of that fund, assets minus liability. So whatever is left over. Fund balance is broken down in a few different categories and it's really just based on the liquidity of those funds or of those reserves. So as we look down this chart here, we'll start with the bottom item, which is non-spendable. That is basically, you know, reserves that are tied up. You can't liquidate them. The majority of these reserves are tied up into advances to other funds, namely the newer TIF districts and longer-term receivables like delinquent personal property taxes and so forth. The assigned fund balance, if you go up a couple of lines on that graph, represent funds that are earmarked for a specific purpose. In this case, the payment in lieu of tax that is paid by the water utility to the general fund is represented here and it's assigned because it's really just meant to be used for the following year's budget or 2023. You do have some control over those funds at this point, you know, as far as how those are going to get used and will be used in the shorter term in the year 23. The unassigned fund balance up one line from there is really what's left over and has no earmarking. It's completely available to be used for current year bills. And then all of that wraps into that total line that you see there. We have a summarized income statement in the middle of the page, so you'll see what the actual results were. Revenues minus expenditures for the general fund, which expenditures exceeded revenues by about $345,000 in 22. The anticipated budget was an excess expenditure amount of $312,000. So fell a little bit short of that. You'll see that variance column there with the revenues and expenditures and you might have already received a lot of this information from Cameron, but just a summarization here that a lot of the revenues were down due to just lower, I don't want to say lower development, but the timing of the permits that have come in. There was, it was really heavy, I think, back in 2021 and those kind of dropped off in 22. With the decrease in revenue from building permits and inspection fees, also you'll see a related decrease in the expenditures related to those activities. In addition, some of the other line, budget line items had some variances. For example, the police department had some overages in their department, but street maintenance was down. So those all just combined, it's about a $33,000 difference between what was anticipated in the budget and what actually happened. If you flip to the next page, please. So taking this into account, as we look at your fund balance over the course of the last five years, you'll see on this pink line how it has compared to your annual expenditures over those last five years. And this is helpful for you to kind of get a sense of where has it been, where are we trending, how does it compare to our annual expenditures. At the end of 22, the, the unassigned and the assigned combined to be about 29.4% of the annual expenditures in the general fund. So essentially, you can get through about a third of your year with your reserves that you have on hand. So that kind of gives you a sense of where you're at. You'll see that it was higher than that a couple of years ago. So it's kind of taken a rainbow effect over the, the last five years. The village actually has a policy that's represented on this graph. It's a range between 20 and 30%, and that's the goal of where this ratio, where the village would like this ratio to fall. So you'll see that it, even that usage of the fund balance that was planned for in 22 then brought that percentage actually right under the maximum policy amount that you'll see there. So that actually was not a terrible thing that there was a loss. It actually kind of got your numbers right where you wanted them per your policy. Any questions on that? The next page goes into debt, specifically general obligation debt, which is secured by the tax levy. You'll see that there is a statutory limit of how much GO debt can be outstanding in any given year, and that equals 5% of the village's equalized value. So based on this chart, you'll see the black line, it's black on the top, you know, just kind of trends upward because as the equalized value goes up, so does that debt limit. The blue line at the bottom shows how much actual debt has been outstanding over those same five years. And you'll see that you're well below, you know, that maximum. The actual debt capacity or outstanding GO debt was at 46% or just under half of that allowable limit at the end of 22. And you'll see, you know, it's been around that over the last few years. So, you know, with growing communities, just a benchmarking note, we often see this over 50%, maybe even into the 60s at, at times, just because a lot of the debt that's issued for TIF projects will be often GO debt. And so we'll see this in our totals, but it's not actually, you know, you're not actually levying taxes to pay for that. It's being paid for in the future by those TIF districts. Some of the GO debt outstanding is also utility-related and the utilities are paying those back. So the, the table towards the bottom here shows how much general obligation debt is outstanding by the village and the utility there. About 20 million of the village, about 3 million belongs to the utilities. The utilities also have some revenue debt, so that isn't factored into that statutory limit. The revenue debt is paid back by user charges by those utilities. 22 was kind of a big year for debt issuance. As you probably know, about $8.8 million was issued for some capital projects as well as some TIF V refunding, I believe. And then about 2.73 was repaid during the year, or 2.73 million. Next page, this goes into another ratio, another way to look at the debt activity over the last few years. And again, this shows how much of the village's expenditures, taking the utilities out of the picture here, but how much the governmental expenditures are on debt as a percentage of the total expenditures. So you'll see at the end of 22, principal and interest payments on that GO debt was right around 20% of the total expenditures. That's a good place to be. Again, another benchmark is kind of right around that 20%. Again, with a lot of active TIF districts, with, you know, growth in a community, we often see that a little bit higher. But given the growth and, and activity that you have here in development, and you're still around that 20% is, is actually pretty, pretty modest, I would say. Down below on the table, you'll see the amount of principal and interest that was paid on GO debt. That doesn't include the 1 million that was refunded in 22, so that kind of would skew things a little bit. But that shows you how much, kind of where those ratios are coming from there. Any questions on debt? All right. We'll jump into the utilities. We'll try to move quickly here. I know we have a, a long meeting ahead of you. So we'll talk about the water utility next. Here, as you probably know, the water utility is regulated by the PSC of Wisconsin, and so you have an authorized rate of return that kind of serves as a benchmark as to how much are you earning on your assets that are essentially in the ground and, and your pumps and that kind of thing. Actual rate of return for the current year was about 1.85%. You're authorized to earn three. So we just keep an eye on that, making sure that you're generating enough revenues to, to get close to that rate of return. Sometimes it's a negative, but, you know, that can happen if, if your rates aren't high enough. You'll see the chart here with operating results with the blue line being your revenues and your black line being the expenditure or expenses for the year. Obviously, we want to see a gap in there that, you know, you're generating enough revenues to pay for your expenses from an operation standpoint. What isn't included in operating expenses are your debt payments. So, you know, generating enough cash flow is important to make both your debt payments and pay for capital projects that don't, you know, those are the types of things that don't show up in that expense line. Talking about cash flows, the table kind of towards the bottom here talks about unrestricted reserves. So that's essentially cash that the water utility has available. It's not, you know, restricted for specific purposes. A lot of your debt issues will have cash restrictions. You have to have so much put away in order for, to, to save for future debt payments. So this does not account for those or excludes those from our totals. And so what we'll do here is we'll compare how much cash, unrestricted cash, do you have on hand in that water utility and compare it to your annual revenues. And we'll see that over the course of time, that has been right around 11 to 12 months of revenue on hand in your cash accounts, which is just fine. You know, you want to have a couple of billing cycles available to keep, you know, that cash replenishing from, you know, those billings that go out to the customers. At the end of 22, you'll see that we're around nine and a half months, which was, you know, a little bit lower than in the past, but that was kind of a, I think, an intentional use of funds on hand to pay for some projects. This last chart here shows how much of the water utility's assets. As you know, utilities are very intensive as far as the amount of assets that are, again, in the ground, in the buildings, the water towers, et cetera. And so this bar at the bottom shows how much of the water utility's assets are funded by debt and how much are kind of owned outright, I guess is a good way to put it. And you'll see that 23% is financed by debt at this time. 50/50 is kind of your goal. You want to have a lot more than 50% being financed by debt at any time. So again, you're well below that benchmark or above in a positive way. Next page is the sewer utility. So a lot of the same information here, our same charts, except that the sewer is not regulated by the PSC. So you have some, we don't calculate a rate of return here. You have a little bit more control over what those rates look like to your customers. Usually, that gap between your operating revenues and expenses is a little lower. You're just hoping to cash flow here. And to note, you know, you have a lot of, or not as much control over the expenses because of the, the involvement with MMSD as well. So here, looking at the unrestricted reserves, you'll see that at 20, at the end of 22, cash on hand was about 11.3 or four months. Again, almost a year of reserves on hand in that sewer utility. So very similar. And that's grown over the last couple of years as well. The investment in the capital chart here, again, very similar to the water utility, about 27% financed by debt. Again, you know, well below that 50% benchmark that we talked about, talked about earlier. So, so yeah, I guess, you know, overall, you know, hitting, you know, the village is hitting its benchmarks, you know, no concerns to, you know, share at this time. You know, you have a lot of activity going on and just keeping, you know, on top of these, you know, you know, your utility rates, your debt limits and all of that, you know, is really important as you go through the next few years. Any questions for me?
All right. Thanks, Amanda.
Thank you.
All right, then we'll move then down to unfinished business. And the first up is discuss questions and methods for evaluation emergency medical services. We'll turn that over to Matt.
Thanks, John. I'd like to introduce to you all Tim, Tim Franz from Public Administration Associates. You may be familiar with Tim as he was part of the consultant team that, that worked on the organizational studies with Deer Grove EMS and the Cottage Grove Fire Department. Some of Tim's history is retired chief from the city of Oshkosh's department. I think about 30 total years in, in the, the fire industry, fire rescue industry. So why Tim's in today is based on some of the feedback that we received during the last public informational meeting, became pretty apparent to both Attorney Conopackee and I that, you know, we're certainly not experts in any of this and we, we thought it, it made sense to bring in a independent subject matter expert to help move the process forward related to due diligence. And given this, we reached out to PAA. We thought they were well positioned, given their, their past experience with the district. And so we submitted some high-level initial questions that you'll see in the document provided by PAA. Those are in bold and then, and then Tim's expanded on, on those and what they submitted. So the, the ultimate intent here would be to submit these questions, maybe some additional questions, depending on, on the outcome here tonight and, and going forward, to, to do a formal request for proposal so we, we can get as, you know, close to apples to apples, information on quality of service issues. So with that, I turn it over to Tim and then go over there.
Okay, well, the document that you have before you, and I don't know that necessarily what we do go through all of the items in it particularly, or just in general?
I don't have so much time, just to...
Oh, sorry.
Sorry, just want to make sure anyone online.
Is it, is it on now or is it supposed to?
Switch on top. Pull it for you.
There we go. Okay. So whether you want me to go through each of the specific items or just generally in those areas. And I'll just start with, the first one was what a question that was asked, and this is really where it started, was what are the best practices, performance measures that the village should research to evaluate regarding emergency medical services? And just generally, I think, and from a concept standpoint, you have to ensure that the questions that you're asking are questions that can be true. To use that phrase, apples to apples comparables from one service to another. And, and what are those things that are important quality measurements for delivering emergency medical services? And, you know, some of, some of those things that we call them the key performance indicators of that regarding response time. And that's what quite a few of those first questions are related to that and not just, we always recommend rather than averages using a 90th percentile fractile to give you a little bit more of an understanding of what the great majority, 90, 90% of the calls are going to look like from that standpoint. And then also in there breaking it down from a standpoint of that not all the calls for ambulance service are created equal to look at it from both those calls that are emergent and those calls that are high acuity level on how they're dispatched from the 911 center. So in, and then looking at what those, what those times are because, and then also in that saying that the system needs to be designed around being able to hit the key performance indicators for those true life-threatening calls. The other calls can, can have an allowance for a greater period of time. And those shouldn't be evaluated from that same level. And, and looking at how, how those calls are dispatched. Some of the other questions that were posed to me or that would be a part of this is when you're comparing one service to another is not just what is that response time for that initial ambulance, but looking at what, what is, what is the plan and what are the expectations of when that ambulance is busy? Where is that next ambulance coming from? And then what are the anticipated or the modeled times for that ambulance to arrive? And, and what is the expected availability of that ambulance based on the assigned territory, which making the assumption is just the village of Cottage Grove proper? So there's several questions re, related to that and how it would be looked at. Is it looked at that if you contract with another services, are you contracting with that ambulance as a part of a system or as an independent ambulance? Those are the comparisons that you really need to look at there. Then after just looking at, as we kind of look at these as system performance types of things, then getting into other, a little bit deeper about service quality issues and that has to do with staffing. And some of the things to look at are our tenure of staff. How, how long have they been there? Those are quality indicators for as far as employee satisfaction, working in the system and doing that kind of work and experience is an important factor, that experienced medics add value to the system. And then as we kind of flow through this, as you see how I've structured this or the way that I think you need to look at it first is these quality issues are the first things to look at before then you start looking at cost. And then you start looking at the cost issues. If, if services can meet these, you want to make sure that before you move on to that, that as you get into different, different cost models of it, is it actually delivering the same level of service? So hopefully you can answer those questions first. And you don't, and that's obviously going to be up to you whether you want to move on to that next step. But if you don't believe they're delivering that same quality level of service, then, you know, should you be looking at what that, what that cost is. But ultimately, that's your decisions to make. But once, once we look at, are they providing relatively close or at least meeting the services that you expect, which you would put into that RFP, then the next step is, is what are, what are the costs for providing this service? And then looking back, you know, what, sometimes there's a little bit of prediction on the future is looking back on the history of it. What's their history been for the last five years in providing service and their cost in, if you're looking at another contractor to do that? And what, if there has been any changes or increase in cost, what were the things that impacted that and what that could be? Because rather than just this snapshot of right here in this moment, what, what it can potentially look out for the future. And, and that getting into some of those costs and some of the things to really drill down on it is what is, what does it cost to operate one ambulance in your system, not just the whole system, to get some idea with that? And, and there are other things, and this relates to, again, some of those quality and personnel issues that if, no matter what, here, you're looking at full-time staff here that are covering this, that how is leave time covered for that? Where do these paramedics come from? Is it done from, you know, part-time people in the system, people that are there that are just used for these purposes in the system? are just used for these purposes in the system? What is the reliability for a maintenance of, and of vehicles that are used in the system? Those are other key performance factors. Sometimes those are a little bit out of our control nowadays, there's a lot of, I'll be honest with you, a lot of quality issues out there right now with the emergency vehicles that, in both fire and in ambulances. And then what would be the procedure for covering that ambulance if a vehicle is out of service for maintenance or, or for repair? And, and then examples of how these other services report their system performance to whatever area they're covering. Now, obviously, you know how it's done now with the service that you have from Deer Grove EMS, but, you know, what, what the other, what would another service look like? And, and then lastly, in costing this out, what, what methodology would you use for a cost share formula in your system? And that's one of the things that I would tell you that we always recommend versus a set dollar amount, because by having a formula, then you're not negotiating every year on what that set dollar amount is, it's based off of a portion of their budget and an assignment based, you know, some type of formula, be it per capita. Our recommendation most of the time in EMS services, since it's population-based, really more so than property, like fire is based off of property, so we usually recommend that a predominant factor in those is assessed value of property improvements, and, and then percentage of calls and, and population, but with EMS, you know, and, and again, that's going to be, once it comes down, what are, what are they going to propose for you, but population and call volume are two of those things we really look at, because that's what it's based off of. So, then the next question that was posed to me, how do you recommend we evaluate EMS options from a quality of service standpoint? It said that, that list of these 20 questions and KPIs, that I didn't go through every one of those specific, if anybody has any questions on those 20, I can back up and answer your questions regarding those. If not, evaluation outcome question, does the proposed service provide equal or improved levels of service to the village of Cottage Grove? Is the high-level look that you're doing here? Can the village of Cottage Grove be reasonably, reasonably assured that the proposed service will be able to maintain that current level of service and expect the demand increases for the next 10-plus years? So, not just for the moment, but looking down the road, and then what will the cost to residents of the village Cottage Grove be now and in the reasonable future? So, as stated just a little bit earlier, financial impact should be considered if it's determined that the service level meets the expectations of the, the village. And then there was some other questions about how should mutual aid be evaluated, and from a mutual aid standpoint, there's a couple different ways of looking at it, is that, you know, if being that you have talked to some of your neighbors about providing this service, is that, is it going to be looked at, this is totally independent of the rest of their system and it's looked upon as mutual aid, or is it another ambulance in their system? If they're operating three, is this the fourth? You know, and then if it is in some of those respects, you know, those are, those are questions that I have in there, how are they going to do that? Okay? Or is it truly going to be looked at as if the ambulance is busy here, the next step is mutual aid? And then where is this mutual aid ambulance going to be coming from, or where is that next ambulance going to be coming from? That's probably the most important question, not necessarily how, how it's categorized. Again, when they're available, you know, because EMS is a dynamic system, that's why we never say 100% in these KPIs, because that's an unreasonable expectation. So, what else do we recommend the village considers as you assess current and future EMS? And one of the things that I've added in here that, and this is regardless of how things change, and it's just another thing that, looking back at our, our previous study, that, that can help, when, when the closest ambulance isn't available, what's the next best step? Even when that first closest ambulance isn't available, and that's the development of a formal EMR, Emergency Medical First Responder Program. And what this is, is the, and it's generally the study, and this is why the question usually arises in a lot of other communities, when you see that, you see a fire truck responds a lot of times along with and/or prior to an ambulance arriving. That's an emergency medical responder program, and the reason why is that at times that, that EMR can get there before the ambulance can to provide late lifesaving care, CPR, breathing for someone, stopping uncontrolled bleeding, sooner we can get somebody there to do that, operate an automatic defibrillator, or some of the other reasons why they're there is to provide the additional assistance and just patient movement, getting equipment into the, to assist the paramedics in everything that they do, just to provide a little bit more efficiency in, in operating on the scene. So, that's just one extra thing that, that was asked of me, and that was my opinion that I shared. After reviewing the initial proposals received by the village, is there a contracted service option that you feel is worthy of further consideration or the any that you wouldn't recommend to be considered further at this time? And, and my answer was, you can move forward with the other ones, but in just looking at things and my understanding while we're here for the report, and I did follow up on this, is that my understanding, and, and anybody can correct me if I'm wrong, if these, this has changed, the village of McFarland just recently, in the last few months, has transitioned to providing their emergency medical care at the paramedic level. So, they're, they are a new paramedic service, and I also understand that there is a state, and this is part of the state law, an option that they can operate with a single paramedic, working with an EMT, new services in lower populations have that allowance to do that, and that, that is what they are doing right now. So, said, that's probably not one that if we were doing these comparisons, that I would just say, just from that, wouldn't be an apples-to-apples comparison in, in service quality. So, those that I know of that are, that are directly your neighbors, Sun Prairie and City of Madison, mainly because of contiguous to your, near, near the village limits, what do you suggest are next steps that we should take with Deer Grove EMS and the municipalities that submitted proposals? I said, regarding Deer Grove EMS, and this is a bit going back on my history and my understanding, what may have led you to be pursuing this due diligence, is approach the Deer Grove EMS commission with your issues that led to your reasons for soliciting these proposals. Lay, lay those things out to, to the commission, and my understanding is the two greatest issues that you have is that you believe all the municipalities that are involved in, that are being covered, should be based on a cost formula contract. That's, if I'm speaking out of turn, but that's my understanding of what I believe that my, my viewpoint and what your issues are. And the other thing is that, and, and again, I know this from interviews that we have done in the past, and is still potentially an issue is the governance model of the number of board members that believe should be based more off a population served and not just even up by community. So, those are the discussions that I think should, should take place first before deciding to move on. And obviously, that's up to whether those things get satisfied or not, whether you would. If the above matters can be resolved, the question is then to you, would you consider staying into the district? And then if not, then the next step would be, take these questions and potentially add more, and develop a formal request for proposals. What you've sent out right now was just kind of a, you know, informal request for proposals, depending on what's done, pencils may get sharpened a bit, and, you know, and the cost could potentially move one way, or, you know, they may look at it deeper and, and discover other costs that they don't have. We wouldn't know that without having a formal RFP. So, any, any questions on what I proposed here, what I believe are your next steps?
Any questions for Tim?
I have a couple. Hi, Tim. Sarah Valencia. One of the kind of concerns that's come up is the idea that in some ways we're subsidizing some of the other municipalities, even if we go by population-based, and that's 100%, and each station is staffed with, at 50%, if that, if that, if I'm making sense, we're, we're paying, say, 60% or 65% of the expenses, but are stations, excuse me, covered with one ambulance, and Deerfield is covered with one ambulance, are we not subsidizing another municipality? And so, I don't know how that could be factored into an assessment of how would, where would that show up? How can we see that?
And, and that's a difficult one, and can be looked at from, from two different sides, that when you have a cooperative service area and cover that, even, even in larger cities, there's, there are neighborhoods that have less calls and some that have more, but from the standpoint, there is added value to an area that has fewer calls, to you even, I'm just going to compare it to the system that you have right now, is that when your ambulance isn't available, by having a larger system, you, you have a second ambulance in your system that you can call into service. I work with other communities that are smaller, and because of their call volume and cost can only afford to have one ambulance staffed, and then when that ambulance is busy, then, then they are going to mutual aid. So, in, in a larger system, if it is affordable to have that second ambulance, there is, there's, there's value, even though, yeah, we're not getting necessarily the, the same utilization of that ambulance as another community might, but there's also some added value about just having it for availability.
And I guess the part that I think about is that Deerfield is so far away from the village that that second ambulance is still 15 minutes away, whereas even if we had mutual aid, possibly Madison M5 would get here faster than that Deerfield ambulance. It's what I, is kind of what I'm thinking in my mind, but I'm not sure if that's...
Those, I, I can't speak to that exactly, but those would be the questions that you would ask in that RFP, of what is, what is that response time for that next ambulance?
Yeah, okay. And you had that question in there, I think I saw, yeah. And then I just wanted to point out that, you know, we did bring all of these issues forward to the commission, and in fact, in August, and maybe my colleagues remember, we brought them forward, and the other commission members just voted to stop negotiating with us on those terms, which is what led us down this path to start with, so I do want to be open in that we have gone to the commission members with these concerns. Thanks.
I had a couple of questions on areas where we might not be able to compare necessarily apples to apples, because with a contracted service, we'd be building our own station in the village versus a station, our station now that covers us is located in the town, although it's very close to the border. And how would we, would we go to the 90th fractile response times to evaluate how the coverage is there, or do you have any advice for us on how to evaluate the, the stations?
I would say, looking at it from that standpoint of, it would be, what, what do the response times look like from that particular station? And, and that would be, you'd have to model those potentially, or they would have to model those, and there's ways of doing that, utilizing ArcGIS to, to do that. So, I think that would be their basis for saying, what would our response times look like from that station? And then the other thing that they're going to have to look at is not just what is it for that first call, again, they have to look at what is their percentage of time, their availability, their, quote, unit hour utilization, how often that ambulance is not there, and then what would be the response for that, that second unit? So, that, that's how you would look at that, if I answered that question correctly for you.
Sure. So, the models that they would use, would, would they likely be lights and sirens, like absolute emergency care? Because we don't have real-life data to...
Right. And, and most of those models are built off of that, but even though, once, once you have real historical data on it, you can see those calls that, you know, somebody sprained an ankle, we call that an A-level call, where it doesn't necessarily need to have that ambulance get there, and what performance level that you set it to be, be it nine minutes, 90% of the time for those, you know, the C-level calls on up, you know? But in that particular case, though, when you're measuring that, as I said, at the very least, it needs to start with being able to deliver an ambulance from that location to a scene within that amount of time. If it's not, then you know for sure, not only is it not going to get there in that period of time for those high-level calls, you know, whether, when they're going there, lights and sirens. The other one, main reason why on those other ones, if you look at historical data, you have to look at, so you're making apples-to-apples comparisons to the computer-model data, is the computer-model data is based on lights and siren response to getting there, versus historical data that you look at that might also include that ambulance not going emergent to the scene, or getting additional information while they're en route and backing down, not to use lights and siren. And just, so everybody knows why that is the gold standard in, in providing emergency medical services, that every time we use lights and siren increases the chance for vehicle accidents, so that if we don't need to do that, we're not going to do that, and we're going to use that little bit of additional time to get there safe.
Tim, wouldn't some of the data that comes from these questions be data from their existing service, not just model data from a hypothetical village station, but also what we would expect based on their existing services as a, as a frame of reference?
Yes, and it would be relatively close, it depends on the location that's chosen for the new station.
Then, and we talk about governance and how the commission is set up today versus a contract, so two separate types of control, I mean, or a changed governance model, should we evaluate based on governance that is today, governance that we find ideal versus contract, which we just have the opportunity to negotiate however often the contract is up, but there's no, I mean, maybe if we talk to them, if we have a real problem with something, then, with the contract, that could get changed in the contract, but you, you sign what you expect the service to be at that point.
Right. That's why I said, in your RFP, in order to make it truly comparable, that the question is, is what methodology would you use for a cost-share formula? So, I think that kind of puts it into that perspective, that that's the only way you could compare it versus, you know, just to leave it out there for negotiation after you choose, I think that needs to be part of the, the proposal and part of the evaluation process.
On just, not just the cost portion of it, but the level of service that we expect?
Correct.
And if that changes over time, we would negotiate that in the contract, where in our current situation, we're, we're negotiating with our partners, I guess, it's, it's just a different model of how we have control over the service that we have, and we just have to weigh that into our decision.
It, it may be a different dynamic, certainly, because of that, but, but regardless if you were going, moving into another one, performance measures are, are an important thing in a, in a contract.
Yeah, if they're meeting them or not.
Yeah.
Okay. I think that's all I have for the moment. Thank you.
I'll go next. Tim, I, I've been doing a lot of research here in the last month or two, and Chief Ling's been very helpful, and I've asked a lot of people, and I, I guess I'm just looking for your opinion here. The more I dig into, into the facts and figures, the harder I have a time of trying to figure out, you know, average response time versus fractal versus patient outcomes, like, there, like, there's no limit to the amount of data I can have access to, and, and I work for a living, I work around data all day long, and I, and I find myself getting more and more confused by the amount of data that I have access to. I think, Eric, I even asked you, you know, like, what's a good response time, right? Almost an impossible question to ask. So, I, I guess I'm just kind of curious, as I look at all these, these points that you've made here, I'm still really struggling with, you know, you put total response time, turnout time, travel, scene time, like, there's just so many times to look at, like, at some point, it just looks like it's white noise to me, right? And so, I'm just try, I'm trying to take your points and, and distill it to, how do I make a decision on this, right? And even if we weren't going to do, you know, due diligence, even if we, I was just working with Deer Grove EMS, it's still like, I'm... And even if we weren't going to do, you know, due diligence, even if I was just working with Deer Grove EMS, it's still like, I'm still really struggling about how to figure out what's good and what's not good, right? Or try to boil it down to something binary, right? And I guess I'm just, can you help me in some small way try to make sense of this? Because I'm really struggling.
Well, one of them, probably the measure that, or the KPI that is simplest, not breaking response time down into all these different components, is that when you call 911, how does it long, how long does it take for an ambulance to get there? But there again, all calls aren't created equal. The ones that, that were that response time matters the most are those life-threatening emergencies. And regardless of that, there are other types of calls where it doesn't take that time, the system has to be designed that when that does happen though, you want to be able to deliver it in that period of time. Now, and, and where is that based off of? Majority of those are based off of respiratory cardiac arrest. And what are, you know, ultimately, what are, what are the outcomes of that? There's, there's research to that, and that's where some of those times are. And that's really ultimately that, that time, and it doesn't necessarily have to be a paramedic. The best outcomes are when someone that goes into cardiac arrest has somebody there that can start CPR in less than six minutes. That's where they're going to, we start getting beyond those times recovery becomes, but even less of a probability. But then the other factor is we can't, and we shouldn't just measure emergency medical services just on their ability to res, to resuscitate persons in cardiac arrest. Some of it is just what's community expectation of what a reasonable response time is. There's, there's a value even though, that we all know in just being timely and getting there. And there's other, there's other quality of life issues that can be done by paramedics, you know, beyond caring for just those life-threatening things, pain control, other situations that they can get there sooner and be able to do that, that are quality measures from the patient outcome standpoint. You know, so from that standpoint, does any of this dig into really the, the outcomes? You know, really, response times are still output. They really aren't truly, truly measuring outcome directly. I don't know that, I was involved in a cardiac arrest study, it took us three years to generate in a system that did 9,000 calls a year to generate statistically valid information before it could even be valid, you know, to, to look at. And that was combined with three other systems. So it's difficult to say one individual system to be able to do that from an outcome standpoint. But theoretically, that is why we have so many data points now in our, in our records that we keep. As you said, we could statistic this to depth and connect all kinds of dots or whatever, but what I've given you here is generally what things are asked for in a standard practice for a request for proposals.
Thank you for that. And one last question, can you, I want to look at a bigger picture here for a second. Can you comment on some of the consolidation that we're seeing in fire and EMS or fire or EMS departments in Wisconsin today? I know we're, we're very lucky in what we have here in Deer Grove and Cottage Grove Fire, but, but I'm seeing in a bigger picture, right, if you zoom out, there's a lot of consolidation. I'm just curious on your, on your take on it. Are, are you seeing that or what are you seeing, I guess, in that regard?
That is, is what we're seeing.
Sure.
And what, what I can tell you in general, not necessarily, because I have several projects in, in the, in the works right now, but what I do see is in a lot of small communities, what's driving that consolidation is the volunteer paid-on-call model is struggling in a lot of communities, primarily with EMS, and being able to have reliability in the system. That's, that's the big drive that's behind it. So individual communities are saying that it's not very affordable for them to, to do that necessarily on their own. So that's what's, what's driving them to look at other, other options, how they, how they can potentially work together.
Are you seeing, are you seeing whole counties try to consolidate, or is it usually just various, you know, municipalities co-opting? I'm just trying to understand kind of like a big, again, from your eyes, what's the bigger picture?
It, it is up to this point, various municipalities doing it. Hasn't been looked at from that high level, from the county level yet. Not necessarily saying that's a, that is a, is a bad idea. My concerns even as we're doing this is to try to make sure that the system's adaptable to something even, even bigger yet down the road. And because I think that, that maybe, can't say in all areas, but that may be coming as well. As I said, I'm, you're, you're fortunate, you know, where you're at at the moment, because there are a lot of places there, they're in crisis. Even, even when they have, you know, people that are, are being funded to, to be staffing on a paid-on-call standpoint, it's a small number of folks, it's, they're down to, they, they lose a few critical people, they're in big trouble. So those, those are some of those things. You know, the Public Policy Institute has done some very high-level studies of different places. One of the, one that was looked at from a county level was Ozaki County, that really hasn't moved, so. You know, but a lot of, there's, and it's a good thing in the emergency services, there's a lot of pride. And because there's people that do this are, and I'm not saying this because I was involved in it, I'm, I'm just telling you because I was, had the privilege of leading folks that did this. They're, they're very proud and they work very hard at what they do. And sometimes when we look at different models of things that appears threatening or is looked upon as that it's negative towards their abilities and the service quality that they do. That's not the case at all. It's just a matter of how we can do this in a more efficient, cost-effective manner when the demand for EMS services is just going to go up. They're the last bastion of folks to call in, in healthcare. That's why, and I'll just, you didn't ask for this question, but I'll just share this, why is that happening? I would just say anybody that's seen the doctor or been discharged from the hospital in the last year, the last thing that it says, if you're not sure, call 911. And people do.
Tim, I have one more question. Sorry, I did what you've done. I was, I'm pulling up the study you did last year and I can't find the answer, but at what point would the village, based on population, need the village a second ambulance? Or is there a general population guide?
No, no specific one and, and or a set year or anything like that. What I tell folks, what they should really do is base it off of these key performance measures. When it gets to that point where you start seeing what your expectation is, if you set, let's just, I'll use as an example that you want to have an ambulance on scene in eight minutes, 90% of the time. When you see that, and, and that's your goal, so you want to be as close to that as possible. Doesn't mean that if, if we're at 89, that you're in big trouble. I'm just, you know, that's, you're trying to get that system to be able to do that. But you start seeing that number dropping. And where is, you start, need to look at, how far are we going to let this go before we put some, we make a system change to be able to change that? Another one is then availability, or when that ambulance's availability, unit hour utilization starts dropping down, that you know what, that, you know, we're having another, say, 10, 15, 20% of our calls are being answered by mutual aid units from another area. That would be another KPI to look at, that it's like, that has two things, it extends the response time. So my answer is there isn't a specific date or population necessarily for that, it's based on system performance. When the system isn't performing as you do, that's when you add resources into it.
It's just kind of like you said, it takes a while to get an actual ambulance and staff up for that. So I would hate to wait to see our KPIs not succeeding to then decide and take another year for that to happen. Is there any just gross estimate? Like a, a village, a city of 20,000 should have X or?
There's, there are too many variables involved in it. Another one that I'll tell you, that's a, a big variable, is the distance and transport time. How long does it take you to get a patient to the hospital? You can have a small community where you have a 15-minute transport time, or you can have communities where you're always transporting outside of your community and passing through a larger city or, or you know, some of the areas that I've worked in the northern part of the state that, you know, they've, they've got 50-minute hour-plus transport times to, in some of those cases, that is. So, so I can't, I can't give you that specific number, it has to be looked at individually.
Maybe a, a different way to ask that question. I think what, when you're talking about seeing the, the KPI, the performance indicators going the wrong way, that's like a lagging indicator. Are there leading indicators that are going to tell me six months from now, I'm going to start having a problem? And maybe it's not population, but is it something else that we can, we can say, okay, we're going to need a second ambulance a year from now because we're seeing these things today?
Certainly, population trending is, which we know that you have a trending increase in population here. But, but knowing that, that's more of that, we have to be on the ready and anticipate that. And by that, I would say, what's your plan? How are you going to do it? But as far as exactly when to pull the trigger, I would say it's going to be, you know, you discuss at what point you see the, the trend lines going down on your, on your key performance indicators that, you know, we don't see them improving or stabilizing, we better get this plan into place and that's where we're going to set.
So, so if we had a data point that said, okay, we've got 10 calls per thousand people living here, and that we project the population to be X in five years, that we would assume that calls per thousand or calls per hundred would stay the same. And so that, could that get us to a point where we know that, okay, if the population is doing this and we get this many calls per hundred, then these are the number of calls it's going to take to get to a, a second ambulance?
Tim, I can tell you, looking at the data, I don't want to speak for you, but I can tell you just I've been elbow-deep in this data for months now, and, and the reality, and Eric has been very helpful. There are so many variables here that they're, to Tim's point, ye- yes, you could, at the back of the napkin, you could say yes. You could say, okay, if the population needs this, then yes, we need a second ambulance. But there's, once you get, you know, that's an inch deep, once you start to dig six inches deep or 12 inches deep, it gets infinitely complicated. Because what's the health of those individuals, that population that's moving here? What's the age? What's their lifestyle like? What's their access to, to med, to existing medical or primary care, right? Like, there's just so many variables here that it's like, like I said, I'm, I'm still confused because it's just the, the more I dig, the harder this gets, to be honest with you. So it's, you know, Tim's been very gracious, graceful here in like, kind of navigating the question, but the, you know, if you want my take on it, and again, I don't want to speak for you, but like, it's really, really hard to just give you hard and fast rules when it comes to this stuff. And like I said, the more I look at it, the harder this stuff gets. So I applaud you guys for having done this for your career.
It isn't just the population, but I would say the demographics of that population. I can give you an example, we just, this last year worked for the City of Jackson. And their call volume grew at a percentage rate faster than what the population would have indicated compared to the past. So then we started looking at things, and two things that happened, the population that was still there was aging, and the population that moved in was all already of a more aged demographic. And you think, well, and, and this is, I'm not, not trying to be discriminatory in any way or fashion, just looking at, at the data that we looked at pair mix, that those folks that are on Medicare, Medicaid, that statistically, they utilize EMS services more. Some of the things that had happened there, they had a nursing home that was built in there, and several community-based residential facilities or assisted living facilities that were also there, that population wasn't that great of a change, but it was a high change in demand for service. So things like that can happen also.
But, but there must be a correlation coefficient or a regression analysis that would indicate to you like, to point at something like that and say, okay, these five things are what matter. And like, use like an Occam's razor kind of simplest approach. These five things, the rest of it's a lot of chaff. But these five things are the things that are, are proven to demonstrate to be important to understand in order to determine your service levels.
Right now, as, from my knowledge and what we have, I don't know that that's been done or that there's an industry standard to do that.
Yeah, Chief, please. Good evening. First thing would be village document, if you can just leave it. From May of last year. 3TV6622. It's the, the statement of what the, of what the wishes would be from the village for the edit to the collective, not collective bargaining agreement, the EMS intergovernmental agreement creating us. Nowhere in their document, in that document, does it reference any changes to governance and how the governance be allocated by population. There is statements in there about how decisions are approved, the requested funding formula, but nothing about governance. So if you'd like to review that, that would be probably beneficial for everyone to understand that perspective. That would be why there was no, no changes of government in the document as it was edited. Second point of clarification is that while the village does pay 54% of our levied operating budget, roughly, the village uses 60% of services. So one might argue that while it's felt you might subsidize the other communities, effectively, they subsidize you by having the extra resources available that they don't normally get access to. Finally, with regard to response time from mutual aid and our response time from Deerfield, is statistically, with, working with all the questions that, that David had gra, has graciously asked and being able to dive into all this stuff, we can show that the numbers from Deerfield and the numbers from mutual aid partners are relatively similar. I mean, they're not exactly the same and ours are a little bit longer, but overall, those responses are similar enough to be considered equal. Those are my three points of clarification. Thank you, Chief.
Any other questions for Tim?
I did think of another one in the meantime. So as far as governance goes, do you see other models that work well with partners that have various populations? Have you seen the, the representation based on population in other examples, or do you have another thing that you've seen that you might consider?
Sorry. I have, in historically, I've had communities where this governance model has been a point of contention, especially when it's a larger community and smaller communities and, and so having, you know, that commission format, that it's been done that, because especially when community is not growing, I'm just telling you what, what those experiences were. And another way that I've seen it done is that is a little bit more common, is that one community owns, has the service as part of their government structure, and then it is contracted out to the outline communities. So those, those are the two different types of models that I've seen. Specifically though, I've worked with one that, that has a model of rep, you know, representation based on population. I can't say that, that I've worked in with one that was like that.
Okay, thanks. Going back to the, when do we need a second ambulance? We have key performance indicators that we put into the, the contract now. Protecting those and knowing when we need a second ambulance and our various partners might feel differently about when we may need a second ambulance. Do you, do you have any other recommendations on a governance model or something we could consider with our partners on, on how to reconcile that, or is that just a, a negotiation across the, the hill when we get there?
Well, I mean, that's a difficult one, you're asking me how your dynamics of your governing board would be. However, something that can be done to make it more objective versus subjective amongst the communities is basing what that number, what those key performance indicators are. So then everybody's really more or less then at that point, not necessarily voting on what they believe is the best service quality, but they're voting on what is the, what is the best way to meet that need? that need or service quality. You know, so you're building the system around, around what those numbers are, if, if, if that, that makes sense with that, because then you, you agree to agree on those things. And then also with that, I would add though, when you have a system like yours that has rural and urban populations, it's unreasonable to expect the same response time levels in, in rural areas just because of the, you know, population density out there in those distances that versus that you'd concentrate those in population areas as, as it is right now. So you'd have to set one for more, for the urbanized areas and, and for the, the rural areas. If you were to do that.
That's helpful. Thank you.
Any other questions for Tim?
Any decision from board as far as next steps? Tim's recommended a couple of them. As Sarah has indicated, we have approached the current district with our concerns over the many years, including governance. We also had a deadline of last year, as everyone knows, to get an agreement. So we threw some of those of our challenges that we had by the wayside in order to make sure we got that agreement accomplished. So anything from what Tim presented, any next steps that we can inform staff to do? So that the, we can better make sure we make a decision on this matter? One way or the other?
I just noticed the agenda doesn't say consider. Can we make a motion?
We can just make, I think Claire, we can direct staff to do an RFP.
Okay. I mean, it makes sense to do an RFP as Tim suggested with Madison, Sun Prairie, and Deer Grove to get a more official numbers with these questions that Tim has suggested.
I guess, Brittany, has any of this been discussed?
Yes.
This calendar with Deer Grove EMS?
This calendar?
At the commission, yeah.
Yeah. It's been touched on. It's been touched on throughout the years since I've been here for 2015.
I guess my question was, has it been? I'd have to go back and look at an agenda, but has it been discussed formally on the agenda?
What, what are you referring to, discussed?
Our dealings?
Yes, it has.
I'll go back and look at the agendas.
Yeah. It always also shared with all the parties in January. Certainly, this, everybody should have known back, back in July when essentially we were locked out of the whole agreement discussion, and we ended discussion there at that particular meeting. And we could not agree to that current agreement, as this board knows. So essentially, they're asking us to leave. Now, granted, came back and started negotiating again, which is good. But there is, there's a lot to unpick when it comes to this on top of the data.
Can we add it again to let them know or notify them of the questions that'll be asked in the RFP, or that'll be then translated if, then we ask Deer Grove EMS to?
The questions were actually shared with Chief before this. No other municipal would have got them, but Chief did. And Chief actually provided some additional questions again, which is great. That we should also kind of mold around and think about.
So we can distribute the, that to our partners also, so they know how we're evaluating, or is?
Yeah, I think we need to review some of those and then boil it down and combine them, I think. Again, there's a lot of good information. Ultimately, we want to be able to look at this, as Tim said, apples to apples. So that this board can actually just make a decision and move on one way or the other.
I'd agree with Heidi. Sending that to our municipal partners, Barry.
Yeah. Okay. Matt, you got it off? Okay. Thanks again, Tim. And Chief. Then we'll move on to discussing, consider a change in scope from FGM's rephasing analysis of municipal services. And I believe Andrew or Andy is on from FGM?
Yes, I'm here.
All right.
So, go ahead.
Yeah, please go ahead.
Yeah, thanks for having me, first of all. Again, for those who haven't met me, Andrew Mayo from FGM Architects have been project manager on these various studies that we've done for the Village. So we went to kick off the meeting, the study for rephasing of the municipal services building project. And out of that kickoff meeting, we kind of discovered that there were two things driving potential changes. One being new department heads, particularly in Public Works and Police. The other being that your population has significantly outpaced the projections that were part of that initial study. So there was some concern from staff that if the projections continue to hold true for the next 20 years, that they would be hard pressed for space once again in 20 years, which is not some, something we want to see. We don't, we don't want you to be in a position where you're just paying off the previous project only to have to undertake another one. So we discussed the potential for revisiting that, that first study from a space needs perspective. And talking with staff as far as what changes they would anticipate based on a population of 20,000 by 2043, which are what the current projections are showing based on where you've grown over the past three years in relation to what we saw during the study. So what we're recommending is rather than chopping what we did up into multiple phases over multiple years in that two to four million dollar project budget per year range, we would suggest revising the scope of this study and revisiting some of the space needs. Not necessarily throwing out what we did, but taking that and adding to it to make sure that we're taking care of all the, the future space needs that Village staff are anticipating. We would then incorporate those changes into that previous space needs program, update the concept plan, and then update the, the project budget. That budget would also include, we could do kind of two breakouts, one being here's what the total project is all at once. And another being, all right, let's break it up into a, a couple of different phases. We're recommending no, no more than three, just because of economy of scale. Once you get into some, some of those smaller phased projects, you're really going to be paying a premium because you're going to have contractor mobilizing, demobilizing, mobilizing, demobilizing over and over again, just to accomplish what could be done in, in fewer phases. So at, at this point, we're really recommending reallocating the, the fee that you'd be paying us, because we really haven't kicked off in, in earnest this updated scope, updated study. That we could then take those funds and allocate them for a revised space need study. There is potential for some additional fee depending on which way you want to go, but not nearly what the total would be of just the current scope.
Thanks, Andrew. I'm going to jump in here as well. You know, just to, to put on everybody's radar, what we were to ask for is, like Andrew said, reallocating the fees and the additional fees that he, that would potentially result as the study would already be covered under what was allocated as part of the 2023 budget. We are conservative in the amount needed for all of the studies, so we wouldn't be asking for additional funds. I'm going to do my best to share the, share a document with everyone, and then I'll open up for some ques- or I'll pass it off to Matt, and then we can ask some questions. So as, as Andrew mentioned, we, as part of the facilities, and I apologize about this for being so small. This, this kicked back all the way back in, in 2021. And we were kind of looking at, at that time and, and at, and with our budget constraints, looking at rephasing into several two to four million dollar bite-sized pieces. So initially, the study came back in 2021 that the all-in cost would be six, nineteen point six million dollars. That, that study was taken to the board and no action in the 2022 budget or, or financial management plan was taken. During the 2023 budget, we kind of brought, included the, into the financial management plan, the, the Village campus. But with kind of competing interests and our debt limitations, we were asked to kind of come up with, how do we, how do we make this into bite-sized pieces? And, and those bite-sized pieces would only accommodate a building of about, that would serve a population up to 15,000, because that was the original scope of the study. So as Andrew had mentioned, you know, we as staff projected out to what we thought our 2043 population would be. And we're currently projecting between 17 to 21,000. And we realized that both with working with new Public Works Director Peterson, as well as working with new chief, that the space that was part of the initial study was not going to meet the needs to, to serve our community effectively. So we all, one of the things that we also got back was taking that nineteen point six million dollars from the initial study and, and bringing it into 2023 dollars. That, that came back to about twenty-eight million. And again, this is a, this is a rough estimate in, in 2023 dollars. Additionals, the FGM would have to go back through and, and do an additional analysis to get what that, that final cash need would be. Now, looking at that and, and as Amanda presented with our debt capacity, we, we likely could not fund this project through GO debt. Or we would have to do two or three phases to be feasible. There are alternative funding such as USDA, communities facility loans. Because of our population and our population dynamics, we're very unlikely to qualify for the forgiveness portion of that program. However, it is an option to fund facilities using that project. And, and Harry, as he was catching up with us and with our municipal advisor Greg Johnson, had, had brought this idea up to me and talked through it with Andrew about potentially going away from the several phased approach, which would have resulted in about 20 or 30 percent premium, phasing it out as opposed to trying to do two or three bytes. Another thing I guess I want everyone to consider is over the last couple of years, there's been something, some deferred maintenance. Currently, after our hiring in 2023 of Village Hall, there won't be any, without modifications to this building or additional investment, there's no more room in this building. In the municipal service building for our PD locker room, once we do our 2023 hiring, depending on who, what, who that person is, we, we will run out of room in the, the locker room. And then most, most importantly, the old Public Works building, as many of you know, is, is in very bad shape. It, it has passed the point of maintenance, and there is black mold and other things. However, we do heavily rely on that building for storing vehicle equipment. So kind of two, kind of two pathways here. The Village will need significant investments into maintaining the existing facilities, which won't increase our cap of capacity to provide services, but it will maintain or kind of a more comprehensive look on how do we upgrade our facilities to increase our capacity? So I'll pass it over to Matt.
Thanks, Cameron. A couple of things, and actually I'm going to pass it back over to, to Chief, maybe just fresh eyes on this and also the benefit of, of coming in on the surge of growth, you know, this growth in population will start to balance out. There's a very limited possibilities of continued growth at this, to this extent, I think things will balance downward towards about 500 population growth per year at times and, and less. Obviously, we had a few years in a row of essentially about 1,000 population add, add per year. So I, I say that just because I didn't want to give the impression that maybe, you know, Chief Labor wasn't giving good advice on the facility. That was, you know, it seems like it was only a few years ago, but that, that was a much different picture at that, at that time. But anyway, some fresh eyes on the facility now with Chief Gary and primarily locker room space and training room areas or lack thereof. And I don't know if you can just speak to that a little bit, Chief, what you're seeing?
Sure. So with the current facilities has, has been referenced locker room wise. Again, depending on the candidates that we receive will be maxed out by this year for the men's locker room. The ladies, we still have three lockers available before that's maxed out. The flow of the building, while it is functional and it works, there is some concerns that I have related to where we have prisoners when we're dealing with intoxicated individuals and the evidence processing area. Some things of that nature. The squad room, officers' workspace is getting filled. Obviously, we're doubling and tripling up officers on workstations, which is fine when they're on different shifts. But we're starting to run into where we're having to assign officers that are working day shift on the same workstation. So as the community grows, as the agency grows, again, Chief Labor was planning on what he was projecting out. I think those projections have changed for the positive for the community. But that's some of the concerns I have as we move forward with what we have currently.
So some, some of the urgency here with that is even though we're not going to be, very unlikely to be adding that thousand population per year to, to keep up with standards on officers per thousand, which is two per thousand is a, is a pretty common standard that we're trying to accommodate. We're likely adding two officers many years, some, sometimes upwards of three, and out of space now and the time of a, a facility project with architectural engineering costs. And then construction being, depending on supply chain and things like that, potentially a year and a half, and then move in time. You know, even, even if we told FGM, which we, which we can't, but if we told them even today, I mean, we're, we're actually close to three years away in that timeframe. You know, the police department alone could add six plus officers and all departments. You know, it's kind of concerning to even think about because I don't know where we put people. You know, we probably just don't hire people. So yeah, and then you start thinking about service. Or in the short term, no reduction of service, but just overworked half, which leads to other concerns. So anyway, not to, not trying to be all doom and gloom, but there's certainly some urgency here to, to manage the growth. And, and then also I should add, we're, we're doing some additional data surveying of, of other communities in the area to, to get a handle on the square footage that they have for the same services that we have, just to have some, some ballpark data. for the same services that we have, just to have some, some ballpark data, when were their investments made and then kind of our historical, you know, past thirty years of population, staff, and when facility investments were made, so we can have some better context. And probably the best way to initially go over that information is we'll probably invite one or two of you at a time to meet with a few staff to just go over that data in greater detail and then we'll, we'll summarize it at a upcoming meeting. That's all I have, but we can collectively take questions.
All right, are there questions for Andrew or Matt or Cameron?
I have a couple thoughts. Thanks. So I just wanted to take a second to acknowledge kind of where we are and with the MSB and how quickly we had to transition into that facility when we started the police department, our own department. So we have the ability now to look ahead and be able to plan ahead. So I would like to not wait any longer to kind of start making the decisions because it is becoming, you know, very detrimental to the, the workflow for staff and keeping the safety of staff the most important priority. Moving equipment around and trying to Tetris equipment into spaces doesn't lead to efficient response to things or, you know, providing the best service possible for our residents. And I think that we need to move forward with some of these things. One concern I have with the original scope and how we can look at this new scope is we also have community members looking for additional services. And we have very successful community programming going on with the, the library board and how we're incorporating those needs into this building as well, because it's, it is really difficult to look ahead and look at all of these costs adding up for potential projects. And we're going to start that capitalization, which we're going to talk about in a minute. But in this, I would like, and Andrew, your, your team is part of that library discussion?
Yes.
So how do we, we have our vision for where we want to be, but how can we get theirs? And what little bits can we add at a time? And maybe we need to think about that in this MSB conversation also. Otherwise, maybe we're just never going to get there. I don't know if you have any ideas on that?
I, I think you're, you're right to start prioritizing the need. And obviously, you're going to have to balance that with the costs associated. We've done this elsewhere in, in other similar communities. One recent one would be the city of Altoona. They're experiencing similar growth patterns to the Village of Cottage Grove. And they had us evaluate all of their facilities and said basically, all right, what do we need to do and when do we need to do it? And we kind of gave them the, the roadmap. Obviously, theirs was a little more systematic just because they had all of the facilities already. You're talking about some new services that don't even have a facility associated yet. So it, it, it then becomes kind of that balancing act of how do you best borrow for all of these projects without overburdening the village? And that's, that's kind of a careful balance and why I think it's good that you're prioritizing your projects in this formulaic way to say, all right, here's what we need first. And not to say we don't need the thing that we're putting lower down, but we just need to take care of A, B, and C first. So I, I think that's the right approach. But you also need the, the data to back up the rationale. So I think when, when Matt talks about similar-sized communities and what their facilities look like for similar services and service levels, that's another good way to approach this as well as just understanding what the budget's going to be and how much these projects are going to cost. Because as we saw over the past two-plus years, costs kind of got out of control. They're still rising, just not as rapidly, and will continue to rise. So it's, the, the longer you wait for these, the more expensive they're going to get.
Yeah, I appreciate that. I guess in this new look, you know, if we don't know right at this very moment when we're making a decision what year we might be able to afford building a library, we, we don't know. How can we incorporate, we, we obviously see that the library programming is successful. Can we incorporate some kind of space needs for that that will get us through until we can build its own facility? And maybe that's changing space.
There's definitely ways to accommodate some of the programming in, in other facilities that aren't necessarily the library. It, it's definitely a stopgap and obviously not an ideal solution. Another thing we'll be talking about with that library group coming up is obviously what the overall master plan looks like, but then what can we get to day one that everybody's satisfied with that will obviously be step one in a multi-step master plan process?
Yeah, I appreciate that. Look at bigger picture and, you know, if we said five years, but this programming is great, so what are we, what are we going to do for the next five years? You know, that's just an example. I have no idea what time, but, yeah, if we're, if we're thinking about that, I, I appreciate that and I'd like us to continue to look at that. So thanks.
Yeah, and again, that's, that's a, a more immediate need of we need more space because in reality, the only large meeting space you have in the village is the space you're sitting in right now. And I, I think staff and citizens have both realized that space, while it served its purpose, has become inadequate with the size of community that you are now. So that, that's just one example.
Yeah, thank you.
Matt, I have a question for you and one for FGM too, but as we've kind of gone through this pandemic and where we sit today, I've noticed where I work, for instance, is that there's a lot of shared spa, shared workspace, obviously in the village, can have police working from home. There's a lot of people working parks and things like that. But how does the kind of remote work today compare to the remote work of five years ago? Are there staff working from home two, three days a week? Are there opportunities for shared workspaces and alternating times coming in, things like that? Or are people here? Is, is the plan to have people working here a hundred percent of the time?
Not a hundred percent of the time compared to five years ago. Five years ago, it was only maybe one or two of us that would work from home once or twice a month. It was pretty limited. Obviously, during the pandemic, we had as many as possible work from home. Now it's, we need to update the, the policy, but I think there's a handful of staff that would, would probably, would, would probably work from home a couple of days a, a week. But for the most part, we're seeing everyone wanting to be back, but the flexibility is certainly nice. In the, in the short term, I mean, we can certainly mandate it for positions that, that would work for, but we've, I mean, we've, we've thought about that. I mean, there's really only, I don't know, four to six of our total forty-two full-time staff that really, that working from home really makes sense for. You know, and, and even then, very, very unlikely to want that to be exclusively work, working from home. And most of those positions, I just, you know, it's mainly like JG and I, for example. And, you know, then you potentially can run into recruitment issues if, you know, it might be an arrangement that JG and I are happy with, but if we're not, not here at some point, you know, we might not find certain department head-level positions that want to share an office or whatever. But, but for, for the most part, that shared, a, a lot of that would be for, at, at least in my viewpoint, in the, in the short term, because it would be a, a need, we would, we would have to do something. For instance, in, in January, we need to hire a deputy clerk for Lisa. To do that, we'll probably have to knock a wall down. You know, so we want to avoid situations where we need to add one person and every time, every time we do that, it's a small construction project. But long answer to say, yeah, there could be, certainly could be more work from home. I don't think it's going to be super extensive, given the operations of a local government. It would, it would essentially just be having management all be gone, because that's most of the, most of the positions. There's still a lot of residents that like the face-to-face, that's, I, you know, I wouldn't, I wouldn't move much customer service away from being in-house. And as you mentioned, with police, it's, most of the public works staff, utilities, park staff are all pretty unique and not work from home. So it would be essentially, yeah, department head-level staff, planning and development, administration, maybe finance, I don't know, volunteer Cameron, but anyway, yeah. Not as extensive as you'd probably think. So it would help, but not, not a lot.
Okay. And then just kind of being the new guy here, has, has there been, been any consideration around economies of scope, economies of scale with combining perhaps the library and the municipal buildings? I mean, the idea that you would have, you know, one set of boilers, one set of air conditioners, one trash service and many, many other things that you could consolidate in one space, you know, even one building site, you know, the equipment you need.
Vince, that's three months of my life I'll never get back. Yeah, we've, we've been down that path.
And, and, and the growth, actually, the concern that you can maybe speak to Andrew and what Andrew spoke to, e- even though we have the green space and plenty of room for expansion at the existing site at Progress and Bonnie, what's concerning there is we don't, we don't know if our existing services of public works, police, departments that are at Village Hall, Parks and Rec, if, if that entire space will be enough for the, for the village based on growth. So, so I don't even.
Yeah, I guess in my mind, I was kind of thinking there's seven acres over there where the library, maybe it doesn't have to be the police and everybody that moves over there, but maybe administrative staff and a library can, can share a space where the, you know, if, if you need a building for administrative staff and some other folks, it doesn't necessarily mean you have to move the whole police department in there. I mean, you could empty that building out and, you know, the police could take more of the, the building that's there. Just food for thought, I know you've discussed it and I'm sure there's valid reasons to say no, but there's probably a lot of, like, I feel like this is one of those situations where you're not going to get either if you don't do something to negotiate a resolution because there's just a lot of expense here. And if, if we want to get where we're, where we want to go, there's going to have to be compromise. And that, and that's, I guess that's all I'm saying, is that maybe it should be reconsidered if, if something's actually going to get done.
Sure. I would just suggest at some point, we have to pick a path. Like that's part of the, the problem is, you know, it takes a long time and then we're just perpetually studying. So it, yeah, it's, it swings both ways. We just have to, you know, pick a path. So, yeah.
Cameron is.
Is there a change order? Or I guess I'm not fully understanding, like, it says change in scope, but I didn't see it.
So the, the change of scope would be changing, one, the project from several two to four byte projects to rephasing it to one or up to three phases. And then the change order would be to allocate an additional sixty-five hundred for the, the scope of the stud, the, the new scope of the study. But again, that would fall within our initial twenty-twenty-three budget amounts because FGM came back a little less than we had initially planned for all three studies.
I'll make a motion to approve the change in scope to FGM's rephasing analysis of the Municipal Services Building renovation slash addition, AKA Village Campus project as outlined by Cameron.
First, David, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Sarah. Any further discussion?
I just have one question for Andrew, based on the comments that we all made today as board members. Do you think that it all still falls under the scope change proposal?
Yes, I, I think the, the one I'll caution against is, I think what Matt was pushing away from was continuing to study and study and study all these different puzzle pieces and how they fit together and where they might go, which site they might go on. That's when we start to run into some potential issues with, all right, now we, we'd have to look at our fees again. But as, as far as it's laid out right now, just taking another look at the Municipal Services Building and seeing, A, does everything still fit? And if not, you know, what puzzle piece do we shuffle either to another site or somewhere else on this site? So that, that's all well and good. It's, it would just be if we continue that spiral of studying and studying and studying.
So Andrew, what is the timeline then that you think you would have some results for us?
It will, I, I can't speak to that right now. It will really depend on collective calendar availability on my end and on staff's end so that we can start to look at the updated program, because we will have to meet individually with staff to understand what their revisions will be and then incorporate that into an updated program before we can start to look at the concept. But once we get going and, and if there's a rhythm and a cadence, it'll probably be a three to four-month process.
Okay. And that should fit then in our prioritization process timeline, right, Matt? Things should align, so we'll have all the information we need, no?
Maybe, maybe not, but the, the biggest thing with, with a long-range financial plan, at, at some point, we just need placeholders of chunks of, I mean, what is, what is the board comfortable with from a, from a debt perspective and a tax impact perspective? And then, you know, work, work back from, work back from there. Yeah.
All right, we have a motion and second then. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Any abstain? Motion carries. Next then, discuss and consider memorandum of understanding regarding Granite Ridge School as the Village Cottage Grove polling location, a second polling location, I should say. Doesn't say that on here, but that's what it is. Lisa?
The agreement is, was in the packet. We had a just small couple revisions with the school, just basically with timing of when we can get in there and when we have to be out. It's pretty straightforward. The school district did already approve it and we have their signed copy, so we just can put them in the village.
Larry, anything to add? All right. Any questions from board members?
Make a motion to approve the MOU regarding use of Granite Ridge School as a Village of Cottage Grove polling location as written.
All right. First with David, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Heidi. Any further discussion? Having heard none, all those in favor then?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Anybody abstain? Motion carries. Next then, we have discuss and consider the criteria for prioritization and evaluation of capital projects. I'll start with Matt, since you threw the memo in there.
Thanks John. First of all, I mean, all, all the credit to Cameron and Ellers and working to put, put forth the, the process that's in, in front of us here. Everyone that's been involved in the prioritization the last couple of years, I think, would, would agree that a refresh is needed for, for this year to move forward. The, the past couple of years haven't resulted, the, the process didn't result in any kind of finality or, or plan. And it's just not a, not a path that we want to continue down. So the board had asked Ellers what's worked well elsewhere and, and this is a, a model that they shared with us and then Cameron helped make it, make it work with, with the village's processes and, and financial needs and limitations. So Cameron, I don't know if you want to jump in and just kind of go through it, but basically the, the idea is to set some. basically, the, the idea is to set some more, more or less rigid parameters in some, in some ways, and then broader groups in others, and then ultimately, staff would submit, like, we generally do high-level summaries of, of each, each project, and then board members would, would allocate them, you know, per these, per this criteria and, and put them into groups. If you'd like staff to, we could, we could put a suggested group, we, we've seen communities put essentially a greater group next to, next to projects as a recommendation, we don't, we don't need to do that. So board members would submit their, their, their groupings, Cameron's considering doing this, submitting this to you guys through like a survey monkey, so it would come back in a consistent way. And then, and then ultimately, staff would take this as a first draft to work with Ellers on, on drafting the ten-year plan. So, that's kind of the high level, I don't know, which, how much more do you want to add, Cameron?
Yeah, I guess the, the point I do want to make is, and, and I did have in-depth with discussions with Ellers and how we got here, and basically, the, the needs of our community have outgrain, outpaced our financial ability to provide those projects and, and put in that infrastructure. And a key part that they wanted me to add was the, the two million dollars of, of debt annually for, one, maintaining our vehicle fleet, which we do spend approximately that amount between fire EMS and village vehicles. But then dedicating a million dollars towards road maintenance, and having some type of escalator factor in year-over-year to make sure that level of maintenance is, is considered. So that would essentially be untouchable funds, and anything that we would want to do above and beyond would be, be what our, would be our geo-capacity for that year. So again, a lot of our roads, and JJ has done a wonderful job on getting us somewhat caught up, are, are getting close to the, the Pacer rating of a four or five. Once you get below, I believe, a four, it's, it's now considered reconstruction. So what you see, typically see, is the, the cost per square foot go up exponentially for covering, as opposed to maintaining our existing roads and services. So that was a critical piece that I wanted to make sure was considered as part of this, this threshold of this policy. The second was having kind of a benchmark for not exceeding a certain percentage of recommended debt. Now, I do want to mention that not all debt is created equal. One of the things that Harry and I discussed were things that are like legacy projects. So for example, Minnesota, like a municipal building or EMS building are, are considered good debt, because it's expected that typically those buildings serve longer than their, their debt, what it takes to pay off those, those facilities, and, and they are essential for providing services within the municipalities. As Matt mentioned, what this would look like, and this process has started, not evaluation, but because this is a long process, reaching out to departments, getting information, getting, getting what projects are on the, the horizon and what needs to be done. But we would, once we get that finalized and we would send it out via survey monkey, let the board take a first stab at it. Likely, there's going to be instances where the board and, and I are board, Matt and I need to meet and say, okay, you know, we didn't, you know, based off of what the parameters are, we can't fit all these projects, I would consider regrading, or you could choose to leave the survey as-is. I'll leave it up to the board member who, who submits the survey. But ultimately, this gets us to our finish line of needing to get something to FGM to successfully pass a financial management plan. As we're facing operating shortfalls in twenty, a small-ish one in twenty-twenty-five and a significant one in twenty-twenty-six, it is imperative that we are financially planning both from the capital and operating perspective there strategically, and this is a, a key part of that. So as you can maybe see, the, we did choose grades A through F, really with the, the tune that grade A typically, you know, projects that address urgent needs, replace failing infrastructure, you know, project involves public safety. In addition, if we needed to, that a federal or state agency came to us and say, you need to fix this, that would be something that would fall in a, in a group A. Group B is a high priority project related to existing service. So basically, a project that has identified, that needs to be completed in the next five years. For example, we find out the old public workstation will fall over approximately in four years, that's something that would need to get addressed in one way or the next, either raising the building and finding alternative parking, or investing in a, a new garage. Groups C are moderate, moderate priority projects related to existing services. This would be projects that enhance the current service, but can be implemented without adding substantial operating costs, example, less than fifty thousand. The primary reason for that language is the twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-six and so on deficiencies or deficit in our potential levability to operate existing services. So we felt like it was important to tie this with an asset that generates additional operating costs. If these projects are not funded, they would become urgent in six to ten years. And then really, D, E and F would not. Sorry. And then, group D, E and F have very, varying levels of, of urgency, and I would obviously recommend reading through this. Matt and I are, are here to answer questions, or I can turn off to Matt if you wanted to discuss any further.
I guess I'd add one, one thing that we're, you know, we haven't researched every city or village in the state, but this is, this isn't unique. Facing, there's been, you know, this has been seventeen or so straight years of levy limits, which has essentially limited increases in levy to basically exempted debt or net new construction, so growth in the community. So, even a community like, like us that, year after year recently, thankfully, we've been growing five, six, seven percent sometimes, that, that's still not even anywhere close to being able, capable to add significant new services. And you're not seeing any city or village adding any significant new service at all. And, and, you know, unless state law changes, I don't think you'll see that for the foreseeable future. It's just, it's just the way things are right now in the state.
And, and the levy limits constraints kind of, if you kind of look at a map of, of Wisconsin, started in the northern part of the state being a problem, made its way down to the Fox Valley area, and is now kind of starting to affect significantly Milwaukee, Milwaukee County and Dane County. It is on, it, it will be uncommon for municipalities not to have to go to referendum for providing operating services. One of the tasks that Matt and I have, have kind of focused on is how can we make that as limited as possible, kind of re, looking at everything in, in the existing budget to see how we can make it work.
Alright, are there questions or comments regarding the prioritization and evaluation of capital projects from?
Just a question.
Sure.
So as I understand, the way it was done previously, you kind of had ten things and you grade them out, right? Like you give them a priority zero through five or something in the past?
Yeah, we added one through twenty points and distributed.
So how, how does that, let's say you've got three board members that say project A is an F, and other board members say project A is a D.
The way, the way this is structured, it, it's less likely that you have that because you have a standard operating model or definition that you're utilizing to grade it. So if you read it, I mean, maybe you do a grade, maybe A or B, maybe it'll, depending on how you think that, but it's not gonna be dramatic.
I'm thinking more like along the lines of the F, because there could be, that's kind of like a yes/no option here. There's not a whole lot of description as to what that basically is like not supported by the village board. Why are we even talking about it?
In our funding capability, it's highly unlikely, anything that's group D, E or F will be funded in the next five to ten years. Just to put this into perspective on how dire some of our, our needs are, A, B and C. But yes, we would, we would collect everybody's grading of projects, and then hopefully, you know, depending on the results, would, if we would need to sit down with a board member and kind of discuss why or why not, this is kind of is in the tune of the approved guidelines. Again, ultimately, it's the board members' discretion to change any answers or update it, but we would have those conversations to making sure that it fits the, the project policies.
I think there's a decent chance you won't see any funding of anything less than a B.
Yeah.
And there'll be some B, B-level projects that won't, that just won't be feasible.
Yeah. Yeah. Does that help? Okay.
And, and it would, it would be averaged, so, I mean, yeah, the, the, the gradings would be averaged together and, and, or the groupings, I should say, not, not gradings. And that's just for the first draft, too. I mean, it's just the, the process and then get a draft in front of you, and the board could collectively move anything around, so. I don't know if that's helpful.
I just had a comment, I'll try to keep brief. So we, I feel like it's been a theme in a couple of things we talked about tonight, we're blaming a lot of things on our growth, on why we need to look at this, why we need to pay for this, and I just wanted to go back to the, the benefits of our, our growth and building a complete community where we have opportunities for residents that work in our community to live in our community, opportunities for new businesses to open, and really supporting a, a strong community. And with infill development, as it's referred in planning and development, where we're filling in open lots already within the urbanized area with higher density housing, it's less of a draw on public work services, you know, fewer roads to maintain because it's more densely populated, and it really provides that dense population that can support business growth in the area. So, while it's not directly related to this, I, I thought it was important to bring it up on, on the recording, that there are clear benefits to our growth and it's also to our levy and our levy limits, but it is a real benefit, I believe, to our community.
Yeah, I, I will second that, if, if we did not have the growth we had, we'd, we'd be facing levy limit issues four or five years prior to what we're seeing now. The only reason why we are able to maintain our existing services is the growth, period.
Yeah, thanks for the positivity, Heidi, because at the end of the day, at the end of the day in Wisconsin, with our, especially our only, the, the, revenue growth that we're given by the state is property taxes, the, the growth we're experiencing, it, we, you know, ninety-nine percent of Wisconsin communities would be envious of our position, it's just, you know, growing pains are, are difficult, and it's the timing of infrastructure combined with the, the way that Tiff District works, so the, the growth we're experiencing that's generating, you know, some of the population growth, we're not getting all the benefits from, from that increased tax base in those Tiff Districts until they close, but, you know, the day will come and things will, you know, things will turn around, but, anyway. Thanks Heidi.
And the laws can always change, too, right?
I guess, I have, I have, I guess a point or a question, I don't know what it is, but I, I guess I, I have some concerns around, just kind of where the library fits in here, just based on the criteria. You know, I, as I read the criteria here of the rating chart, right, like, the library, you know, you could argue the library program fits into, into group C, but then, it's only less than fifty grand for group C, therefore it's something in D or E or F. But Matt, you just said that more than likely, only group B or group A projects will get funded, so I.
We, I mean, we could make the library an A, and, I mean, we could, we can, I mean, at the end of the day, we can grade, we can put things in whatever group we want, but it's still gonna come down to the, the dollars and it's, I'm, I'm sorry, it's a near possibility, impossibility.
A library is a near impossibility, you're saying, or?
Unless the decision is to, to, no matter what you grade, if it's graded high and if it goes into a ten-year plan, the only way to do that without demolishing the, the village's bond rating would be deferring essentially everything we're, we're doing. Or, or eliminating entire departments. So, I mean, it's an exercise we can, we can go through, but, that's why I say, this isn't unique to the village, you won't find, I mean, I'm not aware of anyone adding any kind of significant service.
I guess, what, what's changed between the budget and today? Right? Because, I mean, just because it, what I'm hearing now is that it's a near impossibility to build a library, but yet, we're doing the master plan, it's not even done yet. We know we have to go to referendum at some point, you know, there's public-private partnerships, I mean, there's all kinds of things, it just, to me, it, it seems like it, what we're doing in the library feels like, from what I'm hearing, and I don't want to put words in your mouth, but like, from, it, it seems almost futile of an effort right now.
You want me to be totally straightforward?
Yeah.
I've been saying that for years. So, I mean, it, it, it's, you know, just high, high level, understanding levy limits, debt capacity, the village's needs. I mean, it, it'd be a fantastic addition, but, you know, it's, I, I don't see how it, I don't see how it fits unless, unless the decision is to not do anything with existing services, defer road maintenance, do, don't do any more parks improvements, so.
Not to get off topic, but I think we've almost beaten a dead horse with Ellers and everything else, that the library won't fit. And I think adding financial prioritization to the board's prioritization process is something that we need to do. I would love a library, but the last year or so that I've been on board, I feel like we've beaten this to death.
I guess from where I sit, I mean, I, I don't see a project list yet, like, I don't know what, I mean, we have to let FGM finish, but I mean, I, to me, this feels like, it's, it's, to me, it's not a foregone conclusion, because again, I don't, I don't know what the project list is. I don't know, I don't know what needs to get done to say, to be able to say, like, a library is a possibility.
So, I mean, just high, high level, I don't think we could, I don't think, without, without getting a USDA loan like Cameron is saying, I don't think we could even afford in the ten-year plan, all that's needed for existing facilities. And only, and, and the only additional things you do on top of that would be maintaining the fleet and bare minimum road maintenance.
Matt, I just, I just want to jump in, because you did mention like park improvements, it's very unlikely that after twenty-twenty-three that we'll be able to fund any significant park projects in the next five to ten years, and that's unfortunate to say, but that's just where, where we're at.
And, and it's not, you know, as much about a project list as just knowing the, the high-level numbers, I mean, it's, and it's a double-edged sword with the library, because it's the operating component, too, because we might also have to ask for a referendum for, to get PD wages in line with market, and, you know, with school district referendums, and you, and you throw in a, a library one, it's just gonna, you know, I would just be, you know, my position's not political, but I'd be concerned about the, you know, political pushback of all of that.
I just wanted to add that, you know, while we don't know, you know, we have a good idea of ten years, but ten years ago, we may not have seen ourselves as we are today. So, having a vision where we want to be, even if it's ten or twenty years from now, So having a vision where we want to be, even if it's 10 or 20 years from now, I don't think that, you know, it's, it was, you know, a waste of, of time. I think that, you know, keeping our eye on what we want to be and what are the incremental steps that we can get there, even if they're, you know, some start somewhat small, you know, if we're talking about operational costs that are small. So adding one full-time person, you know, I don't think that there's a totally no or totally yes. I, I think that, you know, starting with this programming, I think we're showing that there are, you know, small steps. We're not, it's not totally yes or totally no. We, we can work on small things in the meantime.
I guess my initial feelings on this change is that I don't think I like it. But I just want to wrap my head around it before making a decision. So what we're saying is instead of giving the 20 points for whatever we come up with priorities, we're going to rank these A to F.
So the, the problem with the prioritization process before was there, there was no, you, you could have, we're, we're trying to lump everything together. So if someone, board members can submit any description, any description of any service need that they have. So someone may submit that they want library, a, a new library looked into from a planning perspective. Someone might submit they would want to add library programming. Someone would want a, a library built to, you know, as soon as possible. And all of those get put in the category of library. And then everyone's allocating whatever points they want to that and library ends up being a top priority with really no ability to pay for it. And we've done that for, you know, two years and haven't been able to approve a plan. And then when it comes to the budget and we actually have to pass something for the next, you know, for the next year, there's everyone, oh, you know, there's maybe 15 or $30,000 available. There's not, you know, millions.
I, I do want to point out, this is, this is a capital prioritization plan. This is not directed at operating activities. So this is just to identify capital needs and, and so I, I've, I've met with the Sustainability Committee because there's no direct, I would say, staff member for sustainability to recommend projects. As CDA briefly. So it, it's really asking departments to come up with the, the, the listing, including the library and, and PD and, and EMS and FIRE and getting a listing of these are our needs or needs and wants. Now we have to grade it through a category where every project meets the same definition of what this is.
Cameron, I would just add in though that there is an operating component from the standpoint that if the capital request has an operating component, I mean, that essentially makes it even, even worse. I mean, it just makes it
Yeah, so like, like, kind of like a leap back, for example. I think that's another one that's been up. That would likely require a full-time position, therefore adding additional operating costs. Really, the operating, any additional operating costs are going to be a, a significant challenge from 2025 till onwards. And I'll work with LRS as soon as possible to get an updated model. But it is only going to get progressively worse after 2025. So it's not going to magically, it doesn't matter how fast we grow. It, it's just going to get progressively worse as the funding from the state stays the same. And even if the funding on the state goes up from 46,000 to 200,000, $150,000 increase is not enough to move the needle when we're talking about being close to a million dollars short in 2026. So that's not going to be the end-all, be-all.
I guess, what I'm, what I'm concerned about is that it's going to be just capital prioritization. Because there's things on our current priorities list that aren't capital things. So how are we going to communicate to the people that vote for us what the board's, you know, priorities for, you know, D I or housing or whatever that don't show up?
That's a, that's a great point, Chris. Certainly, I was talking with, with Cameron that we could, the board could decide to do, you, you guys could, if you wanted to work on some collective statement, which might be, might be more challenging, or you guys all certainly could still submit individual, you know, an individual paragraph that could, that could be tied to this. And we can, we can reference what, what that is. The other thing that, that we could do, which is a bigger undertaking is there's been growing interest into digging into an actual strategic plan. Having a strategic plan with a vision would probably help a lot of this conversation and unstick everyone. The caveat of that is it's a, you know, probably a year-long undertaking. It's expensive. And, you know, the turnover that the village board has historically had, the, the, the concern would be you go through all that effort and then, you know, the board turns over in a few years and there's a different vision, you know, and you spent 100,000 on a strategic plan. Everyone worked real hard on it. We're, you know, changing course. But that's certainly something we could dig into as well. So.
I think that's a good point, Chris, though, that we are kind of losing something in like getting rid of the old process and switching to the new. Because if we can do hybrid vehicles instead of, you know, full gas vehicles, so what are these other things that we're, we're working on? The housing study, updating our comprehensive plan and zoning codes and, you know, all the, all the other things that we do at, you know, mostly committee level, but some, somewhat board direction also. So I think, yeah, if we can, without going through 100,000 strategic plans, still capture, you know, direction that we want staff to do more on a, you know, day-to-day basis.
The other concern I heard from other board members on feedback of the old process was that literally any item could be nominated to be considered. And there'd be very worthwhile items that are brought up, but then they don't receive any votes. And then the public sees something really important like food security. And then they're like, well, that's not important at all to the village. And the fact that it was even brought up as a priority, you know, commendable, but it's like, how do you put, how do you put that up against? And on top of it, it's not even a service. I mean, we, we don't have much influence on that, so there's no context there. And that's where strategic planning would help rein that in as well. But, but also in the meantime, certainly individual paragraph or two from each board member that we could include with this, put on the website. Or if you guys want, after you read everyone, everyone's individual statements, if that's what you choose to do, you could certainly do a, a workshop and see if there's a way to combine it into one that's, that makes, that makes sense. We try to do, we try to revisit mission, vision, values every other year. You know, that, that'll be coming up next year. We could certainly do that again this year if you'd like.
I guess maybe it's just a difference of how different people view the current prioritization process. Because like, if I have a library at number one, I, that's what I think the village should be going towards, but that doesn't mean, you know, I'm going to kind of railroad through and get it started and built next year, bond rating and levy limits be damned. I'm cognizant of the realities of financials of the village. It's just, I think, you know, something I think is a priority might not be fiscally something that's going to happen soon, but it's still the direction I want the village to go in.
And I think, you know, one of the first things I talked to Matt about the prioritization process is I felt that aggregated table really missed, like kind of Matt said, you could have a library represented five different ways, but it received the most votes even though there's different levels. I do believe a paragraph or two statement replacing that to guide staff on where you want to direct operational. You know, obviously, the library could still, or any service could still be considered in a capital perspective and outlined in here. But that allows you not to have, you know, independently from the public, somebody looks like you voted on library and they're like, okay, you want $30 million and, uh, 1.1 million in, in operating costs. It could be, oh, I want to continue doing programming or, and, and I just, it, it allows you to kind of use your own words to describe what, you know, what you're doing at a committee level, what you, what you have done, what you want to see continued done. And it really kind of eliminates that in rigidness of, of that, that vote. From an outlier perspective, it was really hard to read the prioritization on our website and get an understanding of really what the direction of the board was. Things like, you know, food sustainability are important, but that's not a local government kind of funding. Typically, counties are the ones that receive funding and have staff to do those kind of initiatives. So that's kind of where the, the mismatch comes on some of those things. Like, yes, that, that is a good and that is important. But we wouldn't want to have no votes on it and have the community think that we don't think housing or food initiatives not being important.
It, it seems like what's in front of us tonight is specifically the capital plan. I think that's what the discuss and consider is. And I think it's been clearly stated we need when we have not had a capital, we haven't been able to put anything in that line in our financial management plan for two years. And I think we're like the family around the dinner table that are trying to come up with our next steps. And so I think we need to figure out capital now. And maybe we come up with an operational, because I do think there's value in being able to share those things. But I think we should consider those things separate from the specific capital plan. Because we are going to, somebody said like, study until we're, you know, no longer able to study. Like, it's just going to go on forever until we finally just figure out some of this capital stuff. And capital, I think, is different from operations. So, and I think the prioritization is hard, right? I mean, that's the point.
That sounds like a motion to me.
What?
That sounds like a motion to me.
That's a motion to approve the suggested capital improvement plan prioritization evaluation.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and second then. Is there any further discussion?
I think, I just want to make one more point. This is just a process, right? To Matt's point, if we wanted, if we all loved the library so much and we just, like Chris said, levy limits and debt ceilings be damned, we could put it in Group A. So I think what I've kind of come to terms with is just, this is just our process. Let's try it. If we don't like it, we can go back to the drawing board. We could say, we could tell the public, hey, we tried this. We didn't like it. We want to try something else. So it is what it is.
Just one slight amendment to that, David. I would say, I, I mean, I would either change the criteria, but I wouldn't, I wouldn't have it say what it says and then put it as an A. Having said that, all this does is generate the first draft and, and the board can remove, shift, add to.
We're back at the dinner table.
It's just some direction.
We could talk this to death.
It's just some direction.
I just want to make a point.
So we don't bring you a draft that you're like, this is awful. We just want it to be based on something.
Any other discussion?
I guess I, I don't know that I'm going to vote for this without some kind of plan for non-capital things. I think having the text on there is good, but I also know people, I mean, you've got the village and you've got the number of people that are going to look for the priorities and smaller, you know, people are going to read a chunk of text. So, I don't know. I, I don't, I don't think I'm going to vote for this, but I'm open to continuing to work to figure something out.
I'm, I'm happy to coordinate the, the quote-unquote older way of, the old way of doing it for non-capital items, if that, if that makes sense. We can give that a try.
I can add that to the motion, that the other prioritization process be also put into place while this capital.
To, to Heidi's positivity, I didn't hear all the negatives on it. It was just, you know, not, this was generated because we, we were stuck and coupled with, you know, some feedback I got from a few people.
I still second the amendment.
All right. Any other discussion? Having heard none, all those in favor then?
Aye.
Aye. Anybody opposed?
No.
Any abstain? Motion carries. New business. This is discuss and consider the approval of staff applying for Wisconsin Election Commission 2023 Accessibility Voting Equipment Subgrant. Lisa.
There was a short memo in the packet and basically the Wisconsin Election Commission has received some federal funding. So we can apply for a subgrant up to $750 for accessible voting equipment. So we've already ordered and paid for our express votes. So I've missed that window by like a month of their guidelines, but we do need booths, so it would qualify for that. So that's what I would be purchasing and submitting for.
Any questions for Lisa?
Accessible voting equipment. Is it just, so people would check and go up to the booth then, or?
Yes. So it would be booths that the express votes could sit on and so that they would be accessible for, for those folks.
I'd make a motion to approve staff applying for the Wisconsin Election Commission 2023 Accessible Voting Equipment Subgrant as presented.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and second then. Any further discussion? Having heard none then, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Any abstain? Motion carries. Next, we move to reports from village boards, commissions, committees. Starting off with a board review, we met on May 9th. It was open and closed. Apparently, everybody got what they needed at open book, so no one showed up. So that was the extent of that meeting. Moving on then, Public Works and Property Sustainability. Heidi, please.
Yep. We met on the 2nd of May and we are still waiting for a few things on the solar panels as of the meeting. So they're not active yet. Are we still waiting on that? Okay. So they'll, we'll let everybody know as soon as they start producing energy. We approved the message board use guidelines form for any civic organization that wants to use the message boards. We also talked about sustainability for the capital prioritization plan. And the gist of it was there aren't necessarily any specific sustainability items that are kind of standalone. It's more incorporating sustainability into all things that we do. So that was kind of the direction given on that. We also started a uniform allowance for staff and covered reports. Any, anything to add, Chris or Brian? Chris, it was Chris's first meeting at Public Works. All right. Any questions? Otherwise, we meet again first Tuesday in June.
All right. Thanks, Heidi.
Thank you.
Community Development Authority, Sarah, David?
Sure. Met Monday, May 8th. We elected officers. I am serving again as the chair. Sarah's the vice chair and Jess Robinson is the secretary. Cameron gave us a budget update as to where we are currently. I gave committee members some homework to come back with a few items of possibilities for, for the next meeting to talk, talk through budget ideas, I guess, or projects we could be working on. We got an update on the video project. And then we did discuss the beginning of updating the economic development chapter of the comp plan. Again, kind of, kind of dovetailed into some of the homework items, I guess I'd say. And then really just, I guess, the, the big part of that agenda was just to go back and read that, that chapter. And then we enjoyed. Did I miss anything? Cameron or Aaron or Sarah?
All right. Thanks, David.
Yep.
We moved down to ad hoc architecture review committee. We met on May 9th as well. And reviewed an application from Midwest Steel to basically double the size of their current warehouse at 301 Commerce Parkway. Minor comments, Aaron did have some conditions that I'll fold it back up, but the committee did recommend approval for the plan commission, which we'll talk about in a little bit. Anything I missed? Aaron? Okay. All right, then we'll move right then to Police Commission. Chief?
This was just bringing the Police Commissioner agenda from December 8th. All of that was, was related to extending the search eligibility list for one year, which was approved.
Questions for Chief? All right. Utility Commission, Chris?
We met on Wednesday, May 10th. We talked about order, ordering a valve exerciser and sewer cleaner. At the previous meeting, there was a little hesitation because it was a good chunk of money and we weren't sure how it was going to be paid for. But Cameron sent us some info. It said the sewer utility and the water utility were bringing in more revenue than projected, so it should be enough to pay for that. So we said okay to buying that. We discussed the, having to install a meter at Burnmore Church on Main Street. It's going to have to be installed. They don't have one now, but they're going to have to. They're still trying to figure out where they're going to put it, just to kind of make the burden on the church as low as possible. So we're looking forward to hearing more about that. And we got the engineers report. It was mostly the same as last month. They're still waiting on the second dip to be fixed at Authentix. And a little bit about the lift station at 10. And we approved vouchers, and we adjourned. Next meeting is next month, on what, first, first Tuesday, Wednesday? First Wednesday? Second Wednesday? I don't know.
Second Wednesday.
That's in three weeks.
I'll add one thing. It is very likely that the utility, at the next utility commission, that they will, there's an action item to approve a simplified rate case and then continue with the full-blown rate case study. The new rates would be effective, not third quarter as previously mentioned, but potentially fourth quarter. The current rates are as of 2019.
Thanks, Chris. Thanks, Aaron. Next then, we will move on to the plan commission. We have four items to discuss and consider here. The plan commission met on the 10th of May. We had a public hearing for the one discussed item around proposed amendment for zoning ordinance for HR9 Historical Resident District. The commission approved that in the next item seven. Had another public hearing in regards to conditional use permit for a property on Main Street for Chris Miller. Again, we'll hear about that tonight. Commission recommended the board approve that. Then there was a discuss and consider for an application from Houston Properties for precise implementation plan for a 27-unit senior apartment. Again, commission recommended approval of that. And then finally, as, no, not finally, we also had a discuss and consider for the steel addition. Again, recommended approval for the board. Then moved into some items around the housing advisory report and discussing some parking requirements. Aaron brought that through to the commission. Minor considerations there. And then continued discussion about the flexibility of mix of unit, of housing units in planned neighborhood districts. Again, another action we'll continue discussing in the future. So with that, we'll move right to, the first item here is discuss and consider the modification of the intensity bulk requirements for historical district. And I will turn it over to Aaron to explain.
Yes, these first two items, A and B, are separate but somewhat related. It's kind of started from Mr. Miller coming forward. He owns a lot on Main Street, and he came to the plan commission a couple of months ago with the concept for a duplex on a lot that's zoned historical residential. That's a zoning district that was created probably 15, 20 years ago to accommodate some of the smaller, older lots in the village that predate the current zoning and probably predate any zoning in the village. Those lots tend to be smaller. What kind of came out of those discussions, even though the HR9 district allows things like duplexes as a conditional use, some of the other limitations in terms of the green space required or the amount of building coverage kind of prevented you from being able to do a duplex, even if it was approved as a conditional use. So while these changes are not intended to make an exception just for this project, they kind of came about from this project, and I think they will apply to other historical lots where similar types of projects may come forward in the future. So the changes we made are, one, adjusting the minimum landscape surface ratio. Currently, 50% of the lot had to remain as green space. We're changing that to be 20%. If it's something that's allowed as a conditional use, like a duplex, and that's kind of being driven that if you're having a duplex with two garages and then the driveway to get to the garages, it just takes up more space. To kind of offset the impact of that, we're saying if you do go to that 20%, you're required to screen that area in the backyard in a way that's opaque to the neighbors, either a privacy fence or continuous landscaping. Similar was the maximum building coverage. Currently, only 30% of the lot could be covered, and we're saying this could go up to 50 again if it's a conditional use, like a duplex.
Any questions regarding the update to the zoning ordinance? It's exciting stuff, you know?
I'll make a motion that we approve the proposed amendment to 325-38D6 of the zoning ordinance to modify intensity bulk requirements in the HR9 Historical Residential District.
And I'll second.
All right, we have a motion and second then regarding this. Any further discussion?
Really? Look, Aaron, I'm reading here the amended text. Just to make this real, is there, does, does the builder have an idea of how he would accommodate this?
Yeah, so we'll see that in A and B.
Yeah.
I'm just, I'm just trying to picture what, like, because there's a lot of numbers, like, going from the current text to the amended text, I'm trying to, it's, like, minimum landscape surface is 50% or 20% for a use permitted as a conditional use when screening is provided around the rear yard pavement areas. So you can do 50% landscaping or a six-foot-tall privacy fence, or evergreen landscaping? Am I reading this right?
So if you're exceeding the 50%, then you would have to screen any pavement in the backyard, basically.
Trying to picture what that is.
So you're going to see an example in just a moment.
Well, it's hard for me, it's hard for me to approve it if I don't know, like, I'm trying to make sense.
Oh, okay. Bring up that slide.
Because we're going from, it's, again, I'm just trying to make it real in my head because the numbers don't make any sense to me.
So this would be that lot. As you can see, much of the backyard is covered up with that driveway that they need to access the two garages in the back. So the yellow would be the screening that would be required by this ordinance.
Okay. Good. Thanks, Sean. I have a, I'm looking at it on Google Street View here. And if I'm a homeowner of one of those two homes, thinking I bought these houses, thinking that that type of home wasn't able to be built there, and then we changed the rule after they bought the house, I wouldn't be too happy about it. It looks like an awfully small lot. So.
It's a tight space with a shared driveway.
We did have a question kind of along those lines, Larry. Maybe you can help us with the legal portion of having a conditional use for a property and that we're more or less obligated to fulfill that if it meets the criteria of conditional use. Am I capturing that right?
The, the rules are that you have to create, to the extent possible, practical, objective standards for review of conditional use permits. And if those standards are met, that you approve. But in this case, you've got a, you know, a zoning change to allow this kind of a use, which is entirely discretionary. It's a legislative decision, so. Once you change it, I guess if somebody, I mean, I opened Aaron's thoughts on this too, but if you change the zoning district and you allow this kind of a thing pursuant to some measures to protect neighboring properties from having their view overly impacted, and someone proposes something that meets that type, I think it is coming upon the, the issue.
But a duplex itself, if it met the setback and landscaping coverage for this property, could be approved now. That's not a...
Right, right. But it's, yeah, there's other criteria. A duplex is currently a conditional use. And so, you know, they have to meet all the criteria. But, but yes.
So if it, the, the portion we're changing is that the, the buildable space on that small lot could increase. It could be a single-family house being proposed on this that wanted, I don't know, a full-size basketball court in the back or something.
The use is already allowed as a conditional use. This would just make it a little more feasible to do that type of thing.
Yeah. A little more flexibility.
Thanks. Yeah, I appreciate that.
All right. I think we have a motion and second on the floor here. Any other discussion? All right. Having heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Any abstain? Motion carries. Next then, we move into discuss and consider application for Chris Miller for approval of a conditional use permit to allow construction of duplex on Lot 2 of CSM 133327, located between 255 and 269 North Main Street. I don't know. Is Chris on or no?
He's on.
Okay. Aaron, you want to?
Joe, but this is the project that we brought up as the example for David here. This is what they're proposing. It does meet the front and side setbacks. It does meet the newly changed ordinance. He's also provided some elevations. He's looking for something a little more historical-looking that'll fit. He's done something similar a few blocks to the south in the past that some of our plan commissioners were familiar with in light.
It's a next-to-frontier, a duplex.
Make a motion to approve the application of Chris Miller for approval of a conditional use permit to allow construction of a duplex on Lot 2 of CSM 13327, located between 255 and 269 North Main Street.
David, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Sarah. Any further discussion? Having heard none, all those in favor then?
Aye.
Aye. Anybody opposed? Any abstain? Motion carries. Next then, we moved on, down to discuss and consider application for Houston Properties for the approval of a precise implementation plan to construct a 27-unit senior apartment building at 103 East Reynolds Street. This is actually kind of to fill in a spot that they already kind of surround with buildings. But I do see that Houston's are here, and Dennis, you are here as well.
Sure.
So we can hear from them. And Dennis, just make sure that the, Mike, just make sure I'm on camera so I got proof to my wife where I was.
So we're proposing, is that on or not?
Did you pull it towards you?
Oh, there it goes. Our last lot, going up the side next to existing Drummond Towers, we're proposing another 27-unit senior housing. It was part of the original PUD, so there was always a, a building slated for there. So I guess it's just a time for us to fill that in. So I'm here for any questions. It'll be similar in, in nature to what the Houston's have built. Will blend in with the rest of the subdivision, so.
And again, this is obviously to support the other buildings around there and memory care and other things. So there, there's definitely a demand, I think, for that, for the community, so. Questions?
Were there any conditions from, just like something about a turning radius and elevator access or something, if I recall?
Yeah, mine were fairly minimal, just because the final elevations haven't been determined yet. We'll just want to verify those, but we understand it's going substantially ar, existing building, which is a nice-looking building. There were some comments from Chief Lang when he took a look at it, based on his experience with the existing 27-unit about the size of the elevator, but he said you think the standards are probably...
Yeah, from what, what we've been told from Hathi Bruce, that the, from when that elevator was put in, the codes have changed. So we'll meet whatever the current codes are. And then the chief had, just wanted to make sure that turning ratios for the fire equipment were addressed, and we'll have Schneider and Associates address that on the update to the plan. And then I believe Strand had a comment on looking for some curb grades or something to make sure on the drainage out front.
Yeah, it looks like Josh is on.
So we can address that too with, actually, we directed Mike Cockins with Schneider to get ahold of Strand and figure out exactly what they wanted and to get that on a revised plan.
Yeah, I don't know. Josh wants to jump in with anything otherwise? I don't think there were a lot of...
Oh, yeah. It was just a little bit of the drainage with some of the site frontage, and then, you know, this, this overall development is part of a larger group, right? So storm water is taken care of, except for infiltration that they're doing behind the lot to the north, which, which is good. So maybe other stormwater requirements as well. So, yeah, it fits nicely.
With that then, I would make a motion to approve the application from Houston Properties Inc. for approval of a precise implementation plan to construct a 27-unit senior apartment building at 103 East Reynolds Street with conditions.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and second then. Any further discussion? Having heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Any abstain? Motion carries. Thanks, Dennis. You do have proof. No, you're on camera. Next then, we have discuss and consider application from Midwest Steel for the approval of site plan amendment to allow the construction of approximately 65,000-square-foot expansion of the existing warehouse building located at 301 Commerce Parkway. So I don't know if, is Joe on or?
No.
No?
Sure, otherwise I can, can I give a quick recap? They've, they've always planned to do this, even when it was the original site plan getting approved back in 2015. They kind of just kind of dashed in as a future project, and now their business has gotten to the point where they need to do this. Basically doubling the size of the building. The look will be very similar to what's there now. Just a few conditions in the planning report. One, relating to rooftop mechanical equipment, would have to be screened if there is any, but they have indicated that they have kind of a different arrangement for how that's going to work, and there won't be any rooftop equipment planned. During the 2015 approval, we allowed them to kind of set aside doing the landscaping buffer on the southern half of the site until they came back and did this addition. So now we'll require them to put that in. I've already been talking to their landscape architect about that. And then just asking for courtesy notification to the airport because it is, you know, so close, and they should be aware of that. Any construction activity there? The ARC added a couple of additional comments as well, again, providing details of the landscaping buffer. If there is any difference between the new orange on the new building and the old orange on the old building, that they would have to repaint and make that match. Steel says that's, color is important to them, and they would do that anyway. And the current plans show four loading docks. They indicated at the ARC they may want to do up to eight, and the ARC and plan commission were fine with kind of allowing that flexibility in the plan. And Josh, if you have anything you wanted to touch on?
I don't know. It's straightforward, expansion of their building. Storm water, again, is controlled overall on the business park for water quality and quantity is controlled in the existing ponds that are out there. As far as this expansion to the south, you know, typically, they'd also have to put infiltration on their site, infiltration basins. But the soil is very clay, you know, they did test pits, and there's, groundwater gets higher as they go to the south, so the DNR actually exempted them from that. They're still showing four additional kind of stone infiltration trenches, and we've requested to see if they could maybe send some more to the north in the basins that they have to the north. So we're going to work through that a little bit to try to maximize as much infiltration that they had on site, but the DNR has exempted some of that for, for this expansion, so.
All right. Thanks, Aaron. Thanks, Josh. Any questions, comments regarding this? All right. Thanks, Erin. Thanks, Josh. Any questions, comments regarding this? Otherwise, consideration for motion?
Make a motion to approve the application from Midwest Steel for approval of site plan amendment to allow construction of approximately 65,000 square foot expansion to the existing warehouse building located at 301 Commerce Parkway with staff recommendations.
All right, first from Brittany. Is there a second?
Second.
Second. Sarah, any further discussion? Having heard none, all those in favor then?
Aye.
Aye. Anybody opposed? Any abstain? Motion carries. That was planning commission. Unless I missed anything. All right, then we'll move on to library board. David?
Yep, a couple things. Policy committee met Friday and the fifth. I believe the policy editor, our policy meeting, there was a library board meeting. That's the discussing consideration that we had today. Unfortunately, they met Thursday, May 11. Unfortunately, I was in New York for work, so I didn't make that meeting, but there was an amendment to the 2023 library budget that wasn't ultimately approved. It is in the packet. Requires the board chair, Karen, anything to add there?
Um, yeah, so they, the, they requested, so they passed the proposed amendment to present at the board of the 23 budget amendment to increase library programming. Because this is increasing the use, it's not, it's in a fund that's supported purely by levy. It requires any amendment that increases the level of effort, requires a two-thirds vote by the board. Typically, there's a, are we listening to a presentation today from Cindy on this?
Cindy is here?
Is her presentation? Yeah.
Ultimately, we could have Cindy give the presentation. I'm scared we didn't provide it up on my part, but, you know, ultimately, we do have ARPA funds. According to Cameron, we're going to return the ARPA funds and then ask for a top one. There is a memo of about $7,690. Ultimately, the net increase here is the budget. From a programming standpoint, and again, this would all be used for programming, ultimately, we have enough funds to get us through till August. And, and from August to December is what this budget amendment could help provide us. We've got a number of events per month, non-averaged, like even quarter events per month, and this will, this budget amendment will help us get to the meeting.
I, I believe the current funds are just through July, if I, if I got that correctly.
You said August. Oh, sorry, I got you.
Yeah.
So Cameron, where would this come from? Because usually when we have a, a budget adjustment, typically we take away something in a particular department or whatever in order to kind of make that happen.
Yeah, so the, the current budget amendment as, as is, I'm just opening up, you have it up on the screen. So it is increasing the overall expenditures in the general fund via transfer and essentially it increases expenditures in two spots. But additionally, it's asking for 16,190, 16,190 of general funds from reserves. As David mentioned, it is returning 8,500 of consulting fees from ARPA back to the general pot to have the board do whatever they'd like to do with those resources. So it would be a net increase of expenditures though from the general fund of specifically coming from general fund reserves, which is again why it requires not just the, the passing vote, it requires the two-thirds majority.
So it's an additional 16,000?
100. Of, from general, 16,190 from general fund reserves.
Just for everybody's reference, the initial budget for this was?
15,000 of, in, in, in programming.
Okay, thank you.
What required the, if we had a budget for the year, why are we only covered through July? What changed?
Just make sure Cindy that the mic's on, please.
So I think the original budget ask for last year was for 15, well, we got 15,000. And that, you know, it took a lot of brainstorming, obviously, on our part in December and January and putting things together. And I think the way we, I think originally the concept was we were going to have a weekly storytime. And then, you know, through the gaps that we've identified, it's really become a lot more than that. And I think we've put on 40 programs between the middle of February and then through the end of July. And it's trying to target all different types of demographics and really hitting on kind of establishing some village partnerships and partnerships with businesses. And we've gotten about 15 in-kind donations for this first part of program. And we have another 14 or 15, I think, in-kind donations like moving forward. So I think you get two, I guess I'm not creative, but Tracy's very creative and you put the two of us together and that, the amount of programming, I think, far exceeded what we had originally planned. We also, as with any department, obviously, you know that operations and staffing is what drives projects and we didn't really have, we didn't have that person. And so putting Tracy in that role in February allowed us then to kind of accomplish a lot of these goals. So the ask really is to double what we're doing and move forward August through December with an additional 40 or 50 programs and again hitting adults, seniors, children. We've got the birth to three, which I think is really exciting to hit on. And then I think, I mean, in the, in the proposal, we had a community read is a big portion of it too, is involving the community at a higher level, which engages adults with literacy, but also the opportunity to, you know, talk to neighbors, which is something I think a lot of people are missing without having a physical library here. And actually, scientist at me, the literature shows that if when you have community reads, it actually increases the amount of people that participate in, in different civic activities as well. So I think, I mean, it's a good goal, I think, for all of us. So that's kind of the, the program outline that we have. So the August through December, we have, if you look at the spreadsheet that is in your packet, we outline the programs and the budget, whether it's in-kind or what it would cost and potential dates and everything, the potential dates that we have. We have verbal commitments. We haven't committed anything financially to any of these, these activities. But I think the, the emphasis to, I mean, we've put a big emphasis on finding external mechanisms for funding things. So we have, the library boards applied for over $18,000 worth of programming funding, which doesn't cover time, but it cover, can cover expenses. And we have received a $4,000 foundation grants from the Park Foundation. And that's going to continue storytime in Zumbini through the end of the year weekly. So we'll be doubling that activity. It also allows us to, to put together memory kits for individuals with cognitive decline and allow for Libby training for seniors. So that's the app that you engage with to, to put holds in, in the system and work with the bookmobile. Keep going. We have received a thousand dollar AARP grants. That's going to have, we have to accomplish it with it by July 1st, but we're putting into little free libraries at senior residences and stacking them with large print books. And so I think that's targeting another demographic that is historically underserved in our community. I'm working on a interactive technology project with American University and a couple other partners. We are one of 25 libraries that received this opportunity nationwide and we are going to launch that in the next month too. So it's a texting project where you get to get information about the bookmobile and you kind of like engage with the bookmobile like over text. It's kind of fun. Just something different that shows the, the reach of, you know, different types of library programs that occur. So the investment, I mean, is really 31,000 total investment for 2023 and that would include staff and supplies. 75 to 90 programs in 11 months, I think, is pretty darn good for a part-time person. I'm, Tracy works 16 hours a week on it. And then, of course, we have a lot of volunteer hours that are going into it as well. We think we're going to reach about 4,000 people with our free content. We've already had, if you include the 60 people that came to a movement storytime on Friday, which is our first one in the parks, we, it's well over 700 people in the last two months, which is again, a pretty good metric.
I'm, I'm a little concerned. I, I think the programming's great. Love it. My concern is the, the precedent of spending your entire budget a half year and then going back and asking for more. I, I struggle with that. I mean, we, I don't think we would really do that unless there was like an emergency anywhere else. And so I, I'm struggling with the idea that you, you're just outpacing yourself with, with the budget you were given.
I think to be fair, we've never done this before. So this is our first year and our. To be fair, this is our first year and I think that if you look back historically, our original budget ask was half a million for, for this fiscal year. And then it was pared down to 10,000 and then we managed to get a little bit more during the budget session. We didn't know how much to get. And again, it's based on what, on the good work that Tracy's doing. You know, if you look, this, this goes to cover the majority of Tracy's time, right? So, I mean, I think that, you know, a lot has been said about the library tonight, but again, this is all just to help with the programming and continue to build interest in, you know, in the library in general, right? And it's, talk to any, go to any of the events and this is money well spent.
Well, this is a public service too. So we're providing a public service to the residents and business community here.
Sure, but.
And I don't mean to come off as defensive.
I guess, I guess the, I understand your concern, but at the same point, we've never done this and I think Cindy and I have spent many, many hours planning for next year. So that I think the, the ask will be right sized for next year. I think this is just, you know, it was a thumb in the air and, and it went from half a million down to 10,000. 10,000 wouldn't have done, we wouldn't have even, even been able to do a full year of storytimes, right? So it, you know, we'll do better next year for sure.
And the, I mean, the programming, I think, you know, 15,000 dollars for programming would have been fine if that had included a person in addition, in addition to that. And so, I mean, we did the best we can and I'm happy to take the, the blame on all of last year's budget and, you know, how things have shaken out over the last, you know, six months and how we've put together this programming. I mean, I'm.
I think on top of it.
The leader and fine with taking, and, and I understand, I understand that concern.
Yeah. I think the, the one thing I would add too, I mean, like there were a lot of things that had to come out of that budget that we and even staff weren't aware of. So like, we were doing background checks. Like we had to pay for every background check.
We paid for legal fees.
We paid legal fees and that, like, and talking to other board members, like, we didn't know that came out of individual department budgets. So it was like, there was money that we could have, at least two storytimes we could have paid for that we couldn't because we had to pay for background checks and legal reviews. So it was just, we're all learning as we go here.
I feel like everything has been very hard.
Yeah.
Everything is 400 emails and staff time and hurdles and everything. It's a lot. But I think, and I should have started this way, that, you know, you get a couple of positive comments and it makes up for all of that hard work. And I, I mean, I see that in my job all the time too, but it's a thousand times worth it to see, to go to a storytime or a Zumbini and see the effect that it's having on grandparents and parents and families. And to go out to the bookmobile and realize that, you know, you had hundreds of people show up to it and you had all these new library cardholders and that library cardholders in Cottage Grove have quadrupled since we've started this in 2020. Like those are the metrics that are pushing this forward. And even if a building is not feasible, like that is, this is the most important work that we could be doing in the village, in my opinion.
And thanks, Cindy. I just wanted to, I just wanted to add too that it's a, I was hoping it would ever come to, to me that I had to personally be the one to, you know, speak some, some of the financial realities that, that we're all seeing. But it's, to, to David's question, I mean, at, at some point, someone's got to say something or else, or else it comes back, back to me eventually where like, it gets even longer to even longer know that, that, you know, on, on the capital side potentially. Larry meant to everyone a while back. So it's a, seeing all the, all the interest and, and, you know, all the support and, and everything that's out there. I mean, it's, you know, very disappointing to, to be able to, to, to give that bad news, but it's a, yeah, it's, is what it is unfortunately.
I mean, I still see tremendous value in continuing the work of the library board and continuing down the path that we are, that we're working on and working on at Master Plan and looking 10 or 20 years into the future. I think the biggest mistake that we could make is what happened in 2008 and not moving forward with a long-term strategic vision, which I feel very strongly everyone should have. Don't let history repeat itself. Like this is good valuable work and we should continue doing it. As much as I want to crawl into a hole right now, it is, it's really important. There's such a tremendous gap in Cottage Grove. We don't have, I'm crying. We don't have a place for seniors to go. We don't have a place for teens to go. If you're not in sports, what are you doing after school? We don't have places that you can go and meet with your neighbors and sit and talk and collaborate and we don't have, obviously don't have meeting space. We don't have, you know, places we can go where there isn't the presumption that you have to buy something in order to sit there and work. There's tons of people working from home all the time and they like to get out and go to different change of scenery to do their work. Or if they have to be on a telehealth call and they don't have access to internet or a microphone or a camera. Like these are enormous gaps that libraries fill. And if we can fill this much of that gap with, with the work that we're doing, it's worth it.
That's a good transition into my comment because I'm thinking about Vince's comment. You know, this, the reserves are there if we have huge snowfalls and we have to pay overtime for snow removal or something. But these are huge gaps and I think this is very valuable service. And it was the first year that we did this. We didn't really know what we were doing, you know, for allocating what we'd get for the amount. So then I guess my question is more for Cameron maybe, like, does drawing on this put us in like a difficult position to be able to pay overtime for snow removal? Or like how, how big are we, you know, it's, seems like a small ask, but if the fund is small, you know, what are we putting ourselves into if we approve this?
There's a couple ways to look at it. As you see, the last two years, there's been a sharp decline in the unrestricted fund balance for reserves. We're not, I mean, we're not out of the inflationary world right now. I would, if I had a crystal ball and could tell you where we'd end up at the end of the year, it, it would help. Like you said, it's not a big ask. It's, you know, it's, it's being strategic in planning. Okay, if, if, if we fund this, what are we, you know, what are we not funding? I have in general, given kind of departments a heads up that any operational costs are probably going to met with a no unless you can show some efficiency somewhere else. But again, this is kind of completely unique in, in, in the ask. So it would be a strategic spend down of funds. But again, anybody else, if any, another department came to me, the answer would likely be what, what, what can we do differently? Or how can we, how can we make this not as significant of an ask? Hope, hope that answered the question.
That pushes us back to us. Like, we have the hard decision to make. Do we want to strategically spend that money and maybe not have it available in emergency use? And I think, I think the value is definitely there in the programming, is my feeling. But also, the, the next year, I guess, we'll know how to size the, the budget request moving forward, so we don't have to draw on reserves again in the future.
Cindy or David, have you thought about asking local businesses to sponsor storytimes?
So our summer storytime is sponsored by CI Therapists.
Okay. So any future programming, like any other local businesses, like, there's some big-name businesses that would, you know, cater to kids that might want to donate to have a banner or have their name?
Right. So we have, like I said, over the course of the year, we're gonna have about thirty in-kind donations with a seventy-five to ninety programs that we're putting on. I mean, I think, you know, we do have, we have partnerships with the friends, and we do have, you know, certain things that we've asked them for in special requests, and they're saving, you know, they have their things that they do. We're also, like, I'm not a foundation manager. Like, this is not a library foundation. This is a library board. And we are not, like, our job is not to go out and solicit donations from people to, we have, obviously, and we've done a, a good job of it. But I think public service should be funded alternative with, with public funds.
Cameron, quick question. How much do we have in the general fund that we're drawing out of?
Um, this would be the first ask to directly spend on, on, down on fund balance this year.
But how much do we have? Like, is there a li-
So we're at about, so the fund policies between twenty and thirty percent. At the end of 2022, we were right at that thirty percent mark.
Uh-huh.
Um, I, it's gonna go down, period, because our budgeted costs are gonna exceed what, because we don't actually budget a surplus. So we would have to budget a surplus to maintain that increased equivalent to what the budget would be to maintain that twenty to thirty percent unrestricted. How sharp that's gonna go down, you know, that's something I monitor very closely. It could jump down to twenty-six or twenty-seven. If we have some positive budget variances due to either vacancies in staffing or supplies coming back better than expected, it may go up. But it, it would surprise me if it was any better than twenty-seven percent at the end of 2023.
Yeah, I'm, I, I get the percentage, but is there a dollar amount? Are we talking, do we have thirty thousand dollars in there, or?
There's like one, there's like one point, like, eight, I think, or one point six.
Oh, okay.
It's, it's, it's a, it's a large, yeah. Because it's, that twenty to thirty percent is the, the subsequent year's budget. So take the whole general fund budget, and that, that's what we, sorry, the-
Okay. Thank you.
So is it sixteen thousand a percentage of the one point?
So sixteen thou, I mean, it would be a minuscule percentage amount.
And we're only really talking about seventy-six, ninety here, because we're giving back to eighty-five hundred.
Correct.
Left pocket, right pocket. I mean, it's capital funds either way, right? So you can spend ARPA, I mean-
No, you can't spend ARPA on that.
Well, I mean, again, we, it's still money you still have, eighty-five hundred that you still have to spend on, on a radio or a shovel or something, right? So it's, the, the net increase is seven thousand, six hundred and ninety, not sixteen thousand.
So here's a, here's an interesting way to look at this. Well, programming's great. I attended one with Cindy, but it was just wonderful to see the kids. What if we come to next year's budget and we can't come up with ten thousand? Have you built your expectation up too high, then, for the community? Because if, if we do this sixteen thousand, one hundred, thirty, whatever, and all these programs, which are great, again, I'm not saying anything about that, but what, we're gonna get into a tough time here in the next couple of years, there may be nothing left. And that's where I want to just kind of gauge this and make sure that everybody understands that this is, you know, you can debate the, whether or not it's a nice to have or a need or want, whatever, but at some point, the dollars of cents are gonna matter, and it's gonna come down real soon. So, I mean, I totally get what Vince is saying, too. I mean, this is out, out of the ordinary. Normally, you would go back to a department head and say, figure out where you're gonna, you know, pull on somewhere else and pull up, unless it's an emergency, unless it's all been, is empty. I mean, that's the kind of thing, you make it stretch. So-
I mean, we've had-
I mean, you're doubling it.
I mean, for months now, we've had-
And again, I know it's a pilot, but you're doubling it.
Yeah, but I, I guess, to be, to be fair, right, we continue to hear at, at the outset of every village board meeting from people who support a library. And you can't discount the, the public support here. So to, let me answer your question, right? What if we don't have any money for anything? I mean, we, where do you draw the line, right, in terms of-
I'm just trying to set expectations, you know, as far as, you know, the board is saying, it's fine if you approve this, but the pilot comes through, we see all the numbers, and it's all good.
I mean, we're, we're just gonna have to cross that bridge when we get there. I don't know. Like, the expectation that, that Cindy and I continue to hear, I mean, I have people knocking on my door that are expecting library programming, right? I mean, we continue to get emails and letters, and, I mean, I, what I'm hearing is that there, there's support for this prod, for, for the, for the programming. To, to your question, if there's no money for library, then that means there's no, there's, there's no money for a lot of projects, not just this, right?
I realize that, that's why-
In, in terms of cutting the fat, I mean, like, things would have to get very, very, very dire, right, where we can't, we have nothing to give to the cause. You know what I mean? Like, so I just, for me, it's a cross that bridge when we get there, because I just, I'm having a hard time seeing a world where we don't have money for library programming or any new heads or just anything. And again, I'm, maybe you think, maybe something's changed in the last three weeks or four weeks.
It's been the same.
It feels like, the messaging I'm getting feels like things have drastically changed. And I just, maybe I was asleep, or maybe I was at work too much, I don't know, but it feels like the messaging seems to have changed.
It's, it's not changed. We're being more direct because it wasn't landing, clearly. You know, I think that's the, you know, don't like to be too direct, but it's, I mean, we're gonna need a ref, to, to just continue our, our existing services. We're on track for a significant referendum, or we're laying people off.
Yeah, that was, I mean, that was known in August. I mean, like, we, we know that a referendum's coming. We don't-
Right, but you don't make, but you don't make it worse.
Yeah, but I mean, I, I don't sit in the capital. Like, I don't, I can't control that, right? But we all know that, we've all sat through the same presentations, right? So rather than sit around the kitchen table and beat this horse to death, like, all we're looking at here is an extra seven thousand, six hundred and ninety dollars for the library. We can, we can sit endlessly and talk about what's going on at the state capitol a few miles down the road, but all I'm looking for here is just a little bit of extra money for the cause for this year. John, your point's well taken. We, Cindy and I can help and educate the public and right-size an expectation, but we're still in this calendar year and this fiscal year, and it would be nice to just have a few, few more dollars to get us to the end and, and, you know, provide a service for roughly four thousand people that are, I, I implore all of you to come to these events. You'll, guarantee you'll, you'll like what you see.
I just want to confirm, when you guys started the year, you, you were planning on the first six months, right? Like, you, you took the money, and when I'm looking at your minutes from the-
Right. So I think that we had, you know, the expect, in our original discussions that we had for like two months in December and January, about how we were gonna actually pull this off. And when we started putting together the calendar of how, how this was going to look, it, you know, I think the expectation that we all had was that we were gonna have to come back with an ask at some point if we're gonna, if, if this pilot that we were running was actually going to take, like, was working and we weren't failing at it, it's like, how, how could we come back and ask for, for more? And I think that those are discussions that, I mean, at least the two of us had had, and communicated that with the library board.
I think from, from my perspective, if, for next year and preparing for the budget, if you, like, plan on the whole twelve months-
Right. I think, like, again, I'll, I am happy to take the blame for this, but defining what library programming meant in the village took a lot of time and planning and effort. And now that we are kind of, where we've identified gaps and people have come to us with suggestions and are asking us for more and more things, I think that we can come up with a better plan a lot earlier. You know, coming up with a plan in, when you approved your budget in December and then having to figure it out with very little guidance, very tough ask. I think, and I'll plant the seed now, that having a full-time person in this position would allow for more programming and, again, like, an increased reach, but it also reduce burden on staff members or, I think, it would just be, I think that's the direction that that should go in, understanding financial constraint.
Yeah, I think it's just important to recognize that every year, we can't-
Double the budget.
Yeah, you can't come, like, plan on coming back in July, and we'll just-
I would love to ask the NIH to do it for me, too, but-
Yeah, I guess it's why I just-
I'm very aware. I'm-
Well, for me, it's kind of like, I have a, I can afford, I, I have a budget in my house for a five hundred dollar car payment. And then halfway through the year, I go and say, you know what? I need a thousand dollar car payment, but I don't have a thousand dollars to pay for it. You know, you, you plan in the beginning of the year to spend twelve fifty a month for twelve months. And then you, you build your programming around twelve fifty a month. And again, I'm, the programming is great. I, to me, it's some, to me, it's somewhat irresponsible to say, I've got twelve fifty a month for twelve months and then go spend twenty-five hundred bucks a month for six months, when, when you had the, the fifteen grand. But, and again, it's not to say the programming isn't good. I mean, I, I totally enjoy, you know, I get it. It's, it's the, if, you know, if you're working in a business and you spend twice what you're allocated, that wouldn't fly. It, it just wouldn't. So I just-
I mean, I run a multimillion-dollar lab. I'm, I'm very aware of-
Sure, so you're aware.
How much it's worth.
Yeah, yeah. And I, I guess I'm not trying to preach to you, I'm just telling you my point of view.
And I, I mean, I think, you know, the level of staffing, or, so we have Tracy for about sixteen hours a week. It's double that amount of time. I don't know, I'm not supposed to tell you that. And so it's, you know, to put on those programs, there has to be a body and hours behind those programs, too. And so if you're going to pay for the cost of putting the programs on, plus the cost of the person, it just, fifteen thousand dollars wasn't going to get us through the year, which is why the ask is there tonight.
And back to budget. Like, the original budget didn't have any programming put in it last year. We, like, pulled out some other things that ended up not happening to fund what we could. It's like, what could we find in the budget to throw some money into programming? Because there wasn't any thing originally presented in the budget, just for historical context. They didn't ask for the fifteen thousand. There was plans for more.
Well, I'll make a motion that we approve the, I have to find the right dollar amount. The amendment to, I'll just call it the amendment to the 2023 library budget as presented in Cameron's memo.
Second.
All right, we have a motion second, then. Any further discussion? Yep. We're gonna do a roll call vote on this.
Aye.
Stoa?
Aye.
Murphy?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Whittick?
Aye.
Williams?
Nay.
Valencia?
Aye.
Motion carried, all right. Thank you. Anything else?
Uh, that's it. Thank you.
All right. Reports, reports from village officers. We have a nomination for Utilities Commission for the board to consider.
I'll make a motion. We approve Joanna Williams to the Utilities Commission.
Second.
We have a motion second, then. Any further discussion? Having heard none, all those in favor, then?
Aye.
Aye. Anybody opposed? Any obscene? Motion carries. Larry, anything? All right.
It's nine fifty-five.
Yeah, you got, you got six minutes. All right, then we'll move on to Communication and Business, consideration of vouchers. What is Gin, Chocolate, and Bottle Rocket in the list?
Oh, now I gotta look it up.
Oh, you had that one, too?
Mike just said, yeah, Music in the Grove, yeah.
Oh, okay, thank you.
Twenty-fifth.
Okay. I'm like, it just, it stuck out, I mean, for a lot of good reasons. All right. Any other questions or comments regarding the vouchers?
Make a motion to approve the bills as written.
All right. Is there a second?
Second.
Second. Motion second, then. Any further discussion? Having heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anybody opposed? Insane? Motion carries. Correspondence? I don't have anything. If anybody else has anything. Upcoming committee events?
Music in the Grove on the twenty-fifth. E-Waste pickup on Wednesday.
All right.
That's all we got.
Thanks. Heidi, anybody else? All right, then we'll move on to future agenda items. Matt, anything we, we need to highlight, future agenda items, please? Prioritization, continue that.
I was just telling Larry, I was gonna joke and say, we could move a closed session up on the agenda so we can get Rudabush out of here, but-
Yeah. There you go. All right, then we'll, I'll make a motion, then, to go to closed session regarding the potential land acquisition of TID number nine for the establishing and negotiation position. The Village of Cottage Grove will enter a closed session pursuant Wisconsin State Statute nineteen point eight-five, Prince of One, Prince E., deliberating or negotiating the purchasing of public properties, negotiating public funds, the conducting of other public business wherever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session.
Second.
Brittany, this is a roll call, so Lisa, please.
Whittick?
Aye.
Falwick?
Aye.
Murphy?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Valencia?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Stoa?